I'd like to go ahead and call to order this May 20th, 2014, City of Brookhaven Zoning Board of Appeals Regular Meeting. First item on the agenda this evening is roll call. Tim Nama, myself, is present. Corey Self, Don Bolia.
Present.
Glenn Vires.
Mm-hmm.
Ote Bawcom.
Present.
Ted Beardsley.
Here.
Kent Gibson. All right, we have four members, so we have a quorum. I'm going to go ahead and read the Zoning Board of Appeals Chairman's preamble for everyone. The Zoning Board of Appeals is charged with the responsibility of considering special exceptions and variances to certain ordinance requirements after determining whether undue hardship exists upon an applicant based on the strict application of ordinance requirements and based on established criteria. In addition, the board has the power and duty to hear applications where it is alleged that an administrative official erred on a final order, requirement, or decision based on or made in enforcement of the zoning ordinance. The Zoning Board of Appeals does not rezone property. The board has no authority to grant variances for use, density, or height, or to grant a variance in conflict with a conditional zoning or special land use permit. In addition, there are limitations on the board's authority to vary requirements to the signed ordinance. The board may not extend the time period for temporary outdoor, social, religious, entertainment, or recreation activity approved by the Community Development Director. Final decisions of the Zoning Board of Appeals may be appealed by petitioning the Superior Court of DeKalb County within 30 days after the decision is rendered. In addition, I would like to state that this board is comprised completely of citizen volunteers. All of the board members are residents of the city as well as your neighbors. We realize that everyone will not agree 100 percent with the decisions that we render as a board. Our goal is to make Brookhaven a better place for everyone through our unbiased interpretation of the zoning ordinance in conjunction with the citizen input we receive at our meetings. I'd also like to say that we received quite a bit of correspondence from residents this month for several items that we have on the agenda. First, I'd like to say thank you very much. The feedback that we get from the residents is very key and helps us make a lot of our decisions. One item that was contained in a lot of the feedback was discussion about zoning decisions that we were making, and I just want to make it clear, we do not make, the Zoning Board of Appeals does not make zoning changes. We hear appeals to the zoning ordinance. So I just want to get that clarification straight with everyone so they understand what's going on. Can you hear me at all? Is that better? Can everyone hear me in the back of the room? Okay. All right. And I'd also like to remind everyone, based on the number of cases that we have on the agenda for this evening, if you would like to speak for a particular case, please fill out a speaker card in the back of the room and bring that up to Ben Song in the front of the room prior to the case being heard, so we've got a list of everyone that would like to speak for each particular case. All right, moving on, approval of minutes. First, we've got the approval of the April 16th, 2014 ZBA Work Session Meeting Minutes. Anyone?
I move to approve the work session minutes from April 16th.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? If there's none, all those in favor of the approval of the April 16th Work Session Minutes, please signify by raising your hand and saying aye.
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 All opposed? All right, they're so adopted. Now we'll move to the approval of the April 16th, 2014 Zoning Board of Appeals Regular Meeting Minutes. Any discussion? Any motion?
I move to approve.
All right, do I hear a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All right, all those in favor of the approval of the April 16th, 2014 Zoning Board of Appeals Regular Meeting Minutes, please signify by raising your hand and saying aye.
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 All those opposed? All right, the minutes are so approved. Organizational and procedural items. One item of note is the second case under unfinished business today, which was ZBA 14-16 Rockhaven Homes LLC. That application has been withdrawn, so that, do we need to motion to remove that from the agenda, or just?
I don't think you have to do that. I think that you've noted for the record that it's been withdrawn.
Okay. Thank you very much. Do we have any other organizational procedural items?
No, sir.
All right. Then we'll move into unfinished business. First case in unfinished business is ZBA 14-06, Gipco Southern Incorporated, care of Jay Gibson, increased lot coverage, Section 27-586, and vary from the requirements of the Brookhaven Peachtree Overlay District. 27-728-1510A, 2 and 3, 27-728-1510G and K, 27-728-1512D, 3, 4 and 8, 27-728-1512F, 3A, 27-728-1512L, 6, location of Peachtree Road and Colonial Drive. We have an updated staff report on this item?
No, sir, we do not. To quickly go over, the ZBA 14-06 came before the board 60 days ago. They were, the applicant was given a deferment for 60 days and placed on the agenda for tonight. There was a revised elevation that's shown up on the screen that was received by staff on May 5th. The only change that was identified by staff is dealing with the facade, the fall facade associated with the second story of the parking deck along Peachtree Road, where the applicant has complied partially with condition number seven as stipulated in the staff report. Staff would again stipulate the staff report and the conditions that are listed in the report itself. Thank you.
Okay. I believe that we originally decided to defer this case so that the applicant could work with the adjacent property owners to see if there was any compromise that could be reached between them. We have closed the public hearing portion of this case, but I think that I'd like to see the public comment be reopened. I'm not sure of the order that we would want to do that in. Would we like to get an update from the applicant?
Mr. Chairman, my feeling is that there could have been a lot of new information developed and some new plans and proposals, and so I'd like to see public comment reopened, and I'd like to so move.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion and a second to reopen public comment. Any discussion? All those in favor of reopening public comment on this item, please signify by raising your hand and saying aye.
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 All those opposed? All right, so we're going to go ahead and reopen the public comment. I think it may be wise to get an update from the applicant first unless anyone disagrees with that. All right.
We have the applicant and the attorney here tonight for this case.
All right.
There we go.
Want to flip it? Okay. Turn it so it?
Would it be better to turn it the other way?
Yeah.
That way? Okay. Yeah, that's probably a little more logical relative to how it's placed. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I'm Doug Dillard with Wiseman, Noah, Curran, Wilco, and we represent the applicant. And let me just say from the outset, I appreciate your consideration of this application. I appreciate your indulgence, and I appreciate your continuance in order that we might be able to try to work something out with the neighborhood. Unfortunately, that has not occurred. We have had, offered to have meetings. We have had a meeting with the, I think it's the Buckhead Preservation Group, and Mr. Blumenthal, Ms. Martin and her representatives have refused to meet with us. So as a result, we sort of, we're trying to deal with this in a vacuum, and deal with it on our own, and deal with it without input from the whole neighborhood in an effort to try to come up with a unified plan, and we've not been able to do that. However, we did have meaningful discussions with Ted Sandler, who represents Mr. Blumenthal, relative to the future location of the curb cuts. You know, currently, we've got three curb cuts on three different properties. And so the whole idea in this process has been to try to eliminate those curb cuts. And I have Abdul Amir today, who has amended his previous report to you, and he's prepared to come here and testify in just a minute about the traffic implications, internal circulation, and then the other traffic issues. So in an effort to try to do something, we talked to Mr. Sandler about eliminating the curb cut into the subway, combining it with the curb cut into the Martin property, and then giving us right in, right out, as proposed by our plan. In my mind, and I'm no traffic expert, but in my mind, it cuts the access on Peachtree in half. It cuts from three full-service, full-access curb cuts to one right in, right out, and one full. So that as the Martin and the subway track would be developed, then you'd have a common drive. Then, we also agreed, as a part of that consideration, that if Mr. Blumenthal needed additional parking, we would provide that parking on our property for him. Now, we do not have an agreement with them to do that, and I think Mr. Sandler can better express their position later, but they're not in a position to agree to that because, first of all, we don't have an agreement to do the common drive. And secondly, while we are asking for right in, right out, it's at least eliminating a full curb cut into our property. So we are cutting back on the full access, particularly a lot of the fact that we are adjacent to Colonial Drive, which does have opportunity to go right out and take a left turn onto Peachtree. The other thing that I'm going to ask is that we agree with all of the recommendations of staff, except on two, we have done, they recommend denial, we have done that, fenestration. Jay, where is that done?
Right here.
So what we're, other way. What we're suggesting is that as we come under and show them where we have oriented the pedestrian access into the ground floor of the drugstore, right here, and it is at the corner of, it faces Peachtree, and it also faces the eastern parking deck of the facility, so that we've still got access from the parking, but we've also got pedestrian access off of Peachtree, which is, I think, what the overlay is looking for. The six-foot strip along the rear, the staff supports that. The curb cuts along Peachtree are right in, right out. We've gone from 24 to 30 feet on the curb cuts, which is supported by staff. We also have a, the primary entrances I talked about, number seven is really not a variance. I mean, we don't have to ask for a variance for that. And the, for the entrance not to face Peachtree on the, on seven, on eight and nine have been recommended for approval, and the lot coverage has been recommended for approval. So having said all that, traffic is the big, is the big discussion on this particular application. So I'm going to ask Abdul Amir to come up. I've given you, I've given you his report earlier at the work session, and I'm going to ask him to address what I recall, some of the concerns that you had. One was the internal circulation. Secondly was the right in, right out on Peachtree, and the interconnectivity between the adjacent properties and our site, primarily the access to Colonial. I want to ask him to address that, and then we would like to reserve whatever remaining time we have, Mr. Chairman, for rebuttal. Okay?
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, if I may, real quick, just in the fact that the timer is not shown on the screen because we're using the overhead projector, I'd just like to remind the applicant there's currently four minutes, eight seconds remaining.
Thank you. My name is Abdul Amir. I am a traffic engineer with A&amp;R Engineering. I was asked to look at some traffic concerns, as well as some of the city staff comments regarding this project, and I think the report that was submitted to you was an updated report with additional information. We have conducted traffic counts at the intersection of Peachtree and Colonial Drive and some of the driveways to Kroger Shopping Center across from the proposed access point, and the results are included in the report. The three points that I was asked to address, first, inner parcel access, I'd like to see if it's possible to have this on the display. I don't know where the projector is.
Can we zoom in on that?
Thank you so much. The main issue of inner parcel connection was evaluated from several aspects. The first, the look at the internal circulation and the design of the site. It's a Walgreens plus two-story office building with elevators, as you can see right there, and there's parking here. The yellow arrows show the movement of pedestrians crossing from these parking areas towards the elevators and the Walgreens building. And if there were to be an inner parcel access to adjacent property, all the traffic would be exiting towards the driveway on Colonial Drive, passing right in front of those elevators where the pedestrians are crossing. And secondly, the pharmacy here has got a drive-through circulation shown on the drawing right there with an arrow, and then also there is a drop-off area for deliveries. Trucks will be coming in and going right there, and then the stacking for traffic entering and exiting the side on Colonial Drive will be right in that area. If I could show you a picture. From Colonial Drive, the picture to the, let me start with a picture to the right. That is standing on, literally on the side, looking at the driveway to Starbucks. And it's hard to see in that picture, but what's happening is the queue towards the Starbucks is backing onto the road into the intersection, and then people are turning out of the driveway at the intersection. All of this has an impact on how much traffic backs up on Colonial Drive towards the proposed driveway to the site. The second picture to the left actually shows cars backing up on Colonial Drive all the way past the Kroger Shopping Center driveway, almost up to the driveway, and a little bit past it at times where we are proposing the drive. Now, with all this congestion happening on Colonial Drive, the traffic that we have coming out of the site is in itself adequate to be able to exit and come. If you add an unknown density adjacent development to it, we feel like it'll compromise the safety and the operational efficiency of the internal circulation. Second point, right in, right out driveway, I met with Georgia DOT District Traffic Operations Engineer today about the proposed right in, right out driveway. Because it moves the driveway farther from the intersection, they actually feel like it's a better design, and since there is good visibility, there is no safety issue with respect to the adjacent subway driveway from a traffic engineering standpoint that does not create any safety conditions. Thank you.
Whatever time we've got for rebuttal, we reserve.
Seventeen seconds.
All right. It'll take Mr. Dillard longer than that to get to the microphone. All right, is there, do we have any speaker cards for anyone that would like to speak in favor of the application?
We have six speaker cards that are noted here as opposition, and one speaker card that does not indicate one way or the other.
We have six cards. How long are we going to allow speakers?
Two minutes each.
Two minutes each?
Add two minutes to this.
Okay. All right. All right, well, let's go ahead and allow two minutes per speaker. Let's get that on the, we'll go ahead and have, well, let's go ahead and do, do we want to ask who the, the one person who didn't indicate?
Sure. Ryan Pasley.
Mr. Pasley, are you speaking for or against the application?
For and against.
Well, you haven't been called to speak. We're just trying to figure out.
Okay, well, I was just coming sitting over here. I apologize.
Okay, let's just go ahead and put 14 minutes down, and we'll let all the speakers come up, and then we'll provide four more minutes to Mr. Dillard to put with his 17 seconds. What's that?
It's from the applicant.
So the first speaker is Steve Rothman.
Okay.
behalf of Mr. Mark Miller, who's one of the, was referred to in the applicant's part as one of Ms. Martin's representatives. Mr. Miller has the property abutting, the subject application property, under contract. So the first thing I want to do, probably the only thing I'll get out, is I want to address the idea that the representatives refused to meet with the applicant. I was asked to, and I reviewed your minutes or your video from the March 19th hearing, and you said for the folks to get together. After two weeks, no one had reached out to Mr. Miller, so he contacted Mr. Gibson, Mr. John Gibson. Called him on April 2nd. They had a meeting on April 4th and on April 23rd. No lawyers. They were, it was just them. I think Mr. Gibson's son was there. And at that meeting, Mr. Gibson, John Gibson, told Mr. Miller he wasn't changing his plans, and that he wasn't going to change the location or give up the curb cut on Peachtree Road. So Mr. Miller walked away from that meeting thinking, well, I've got a pretty tough negotiation going on here. He's taking a firm stand. He also said, he told Mr. Miller, I'm going to get the variances. So he took a very firm stand. Then, then he followed up and said, the developer said, we can negotiate, but you're going to have to pay $3,000 to come to the table. Everyone's got to chip in. Mr. Miller was ready to discuss it. He's been trying to master plan the site for a long time, for years. He was told by the Walgreens owner on the phone, butt out of it in 2012. He agrees with the interpartial access, but not with this design. He doesn't want his folk having to go through somebody else's.
Time over.
Thank you very much.
Ted Sandler.
The audio is not working. Can't hear back here.
Ted Sandler, 6400 Powers Ferry Road. I represent Mark Blumenthal, MPSBJ Properties, owns the subway. Can we put this drawing back up? This is the site plan. Now, I just want to clarify a couple of points. I've met twice with the Gibsons and Doug Dillard to talk about access. Our big issue was, they're looking at right in, right out, right on the property line, right adjacent to our full-access driveway. And we are open to a shared driveway, assuming that the shared driveway is put in before our driveway is closed. We don't want to agree to shared access today without any agreement with Mrs. Martin or Mr. Miller. Right now, it's easy for them to say, okay, we're going to have a shared driveway. Nothing exists. So if this were to get approved, we're still going to end up with what we had two months ago, which is a new right in, right out driveway immediately adjacent to our full-access driveway. I understand, I know Abdul well, I know A&amp;R, I've worked with them for years. I cannot understand how you can't look at that and say, this is an unsafe situation. You're going to have people coming into the subway thinking they're getting into Walgreens because you can make a left turn in, which you can't do into Walgreens. You're going to have traffic exiting Walgreens looking back to the south of Peachtree, not seeing exiting traffic coming from the subway. To have two driveways immediately adjacent doesn't make sense. We support interpartial access. We support shared driveways. We've said that from the beginning. We'll work with the Walgreens developer. We'll work with Mrs. Martin's developer.
Thirty seconds.
But we have to have something that makes sense for everybody. This is, this looks great on paper, but in reality, it doesn't work because it's something that they're promising, they have no control over. It just, it's still going to end up with two driveways immediately adjacent to each other. Our suggestion was, if you want to have this, agree that your right in, right out on Peachtree is contingent upon the shared driveway being built. Let's have one before we have the other. Thank you.
Thank you.
Linda Dunleavy.
Good evening. Linda Dunleavy, in behalf of the Brookhaven Peachtree Community Alliance. We were here last time that this matter was up, and I wanted to sort of echo what the previous two speakers said. Brookhaven Peachtree Community Alliance attempted to have meetings with the developer, and in fact, we identified a planner who was willing to come up with a unified development plan, tried to get the stakeholders to the table, but I do agree with Mr. Dillard's characterization that we were unable to do that within the time constraints that limited us. I want to remind the board, like I did last time, that what is before you is something of a very limited inquiry. You have delegated authority to decide whether or not Mr. Dillard's client has presented to you evidence that he meets the variance criteria for all five variances. I submit that he does not meet those criteria. You know what the criteria are. The request is not being driven by some kind of hardship or some kind of unique features of the property, but it's being driven by the sheer mass of the project that's being proposed on this standalone site. It is simply too big to be accommodated on this site. That is not a reason for a variance. Financial hardship, the desire for money and profit, is not a reason for granting variances either. So we simply submit that they do not meet the criteria. If they reduce the massive scale of this particular project, they could meet, they could meet the ordinance. They could comply with the ordinance. They could comply with the overlay. There's absolutely no reason for all of these variances. Finally, I'd like to say with respect to the curb cut.
Thirty seconds.
Granting the curb cut on Peachtree tonight for this development will set a very dangerous precedent. There are two other curb cut variances before you this evening. If you grant this curb cut, you're going to gut a very critical element of the overlay and make the overlay just worth loss. Thank you.
Thomas Porter.
I live at 1420 Canucci Drive, Northeast Atlanta. I truly see no reason to try to cut the baby in half here. This is a clear case of not meeting the criteria. The, actually, the staff comments to you saying that these are things that you should look at in making a determination are not what the ordinance is saying. They say they shall be authorized only upon making all of the decisions. I made a matrix, only because it is something that you can see clearly, that you need to go from left to right and fill in all five blocks. The very first criteria is that this house, that the site has to be exceptional in both size, shape, topography. It doesn't meet that. It's a culmination, it's four lots, commercial lots, for which there's no standard of size joined together. It doesn't meet that. It doesn't meet most of the other ones. I tried to be as fair as I could and indicate in this graph whether these make, these meet the criteria or not. They just don't. The best one makes two out of five. This should not be something that is, that you all seek compromise on. This is not something that should be worried about.
Thirty seconds.
This is something that you all ought to just understand the criteria and apply the criteria across the board. Thank you.
Bill Roberts. Bill Roberts.
Thank you. I'm representing BPCA as well as I'm a resident in Brookhaven Heights, and I wanted to speak specifically about, um, the letter that was sent out to BPCA to all of you earlier. I hope you guys saw it and won't want to belabor those points, but I think the gist of what Linda said is, this is not an exceptional situation, so none of these variances really rise to the, the merit of approving them. But I wanted to also speak as a resident of Brookhaven Heights because one of the issues, the traffic that's going to generate is on Colonial, and the design of the parking structure behind the building right now does not have continuous connection from the upper floors all the way down to the bottom floor where Walgreens will be. So, the intent of the design is to Walgreens traffic would only be entering and exiting from Peachtree, and the office space above would only be entering and exiting from Colonial. The neighborhood I live in is right over the bridge. It's directly impacted by any traffic on Colonial, and we're very concerned about, you know, that traffic flow. If the parking deck could be revised to have ramps that would go all the way up and all the way down, we think that that would be an improvement over the current design. So, if you are not inclined to deny the applicant tonight, we'd like to see if there could be another sixty-day deferral because there had been progress made in the last sixty days. It was a worthwhile exercise and, uh, in the spirit of trying to cooperate and see if maybe more progress could be made, we'd like to request that you at least consider another deferral to rethink that parking deck. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Porter.
Jenny Troutman.
I didn't want to speak. I just wanted to have my comments right in the chat. Please uphold the Brookhaven Peachtree Everly District and deny these variances.
All right.
Anne Ryan Pasley.
Thank you all for letting me come back up. I'm sorry for not knowing the process, but, um, I'm a resident also behind, uh, the proposed site, and, um, you know, the Brookhaven overlay is all about pedestrian-friendly, um, businesses and community, and that picture that the, um, traffic guy just showed, I mean, you saw the traffic by Starbucks. If you had a hundred and twenty spots from just the, um, the office space, it's going to be an absolute nightmare. And I think there was just a traffic count on Standard last week or two weeks ago, and there's eighteen thousand cars up and down Standard, uh, in one week. I mean, I just can't imagine, um, that this would lessen, uh, you know, it's, uh, that neighborhood's going to service the Kroger, service the Starbucks, service the Walgreens. You know, we're all about trying to be pedestrians and walking all up there, um, but I'm scared to walk my kids up the street because, you know, it's, it's, it's crazy on Peachtree. And the traffic backs up, and people kind of let people, you know, cross the street, and tonight, I saw almost two people almost get hit because of that, you know? So, I think there needs to be more talk about this. I, I don't think the Walgreens has made an effort to talk to the neighborhood in the back, um, and I wish they would clean up a stupid site. That's my, you know, that's my two minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Pasley.
No more speaker cards.
All right. Um, so, we need to do four minutes.
Four minutes, seventeen seconds.
Seventeen seconds. Okay. All right. Mr. Dillard, if you'd like to come back up?
Kind of hard for me to say my name in four minutes, but-
It's better than seventeen seconds.
Better than seventeen seconds. I appreciate that, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I'm going to let Mr. Mr. Gibson talk about his meetings and attempts to meet with Mr. Mr. Miller and Mr. Rothman's comments. Let me, let me just tell you in summary. Overlay is the problem. The overlay is not realistic. We're asking for eight variances, and so, we have made a facial challenge on all that. At the same time, we have come all the way to amending staff's recommendations for approval, even where they recommended denial. So, we, we've amended our application. We've done the fenestration. We've moved the front doors. We have, we have dealt with access. We have not dealt with interparcial access, and we had our traffic engineer here to say, "That doesn't make any sense." We also know, because of our meetings today with city staff and DOT, that we will get a right-in, right-out, and they, they confirm that, and we're, we're asking that that be said. We can't get right-in, right-out, we don't get to develop the property. Uh, we got three points of access right now. We're cutting, we're cutting one of them out, and they're closer together today, full-access, than the right-in, right-out subway and Ms. Martin's access is today. If you look at the subway access and Ms. Martin's access, I mean, I think they're like twenty feet apart. I mean, they're almost, almost together already. So, if we could work something out, it'd be great. We weren't able to do that. I'm going to ask Mr. Mr. Gibson to close with his conversations with Miller. We ask that you approve it in accordance with the staff's recommendation based on our minimum. Thank you.
Y'all, thanks again for tonight, for giving us the chance. I told you last time, I was born and raised in this neighborhood. I've lived here my whole life. It matters. It matters. We sat out after our last meeting to fulfill what you asked us to look at. We met with Mark Miller three times now. Once, we met with Councilman Bates-Madison and City Manager Marie Garrett. That was prior to our first hearing. We've met two more times with him. At no time, at no time, did he ever bring a proposed plan, a proposed plan. So, you're asking us to talk about what we need to talk about, what is serious, and there's nothing, we can't even respond when there's no plan. Uh, nothing, no ideas. And, and I appreciate him meeting with us, but it just didn't go anywhere. The main things that I want to say further to that is this. There are six years left on the subway lease. Mr. Blumenthal can't do anything about it. That building is there for six years, period. That property's going to sit there for six years. The second thing is, as far as the neighborhood, I understand the neighborhood behind. I was born in this neighborhood. What we're proposing to build without the interparcial access will be whatever it is for our lifetime. Kroger just signed a twenty-year lease with ten-five-year options. That traffic will be what it is. Starbucks is what it is. We have a hundred and twenty-nine parks, more than half is office. It will be, after five o'clock, it's gone, and on weekends, it's gone. But it will never impact more than that. Walgreens is a twenty-year lease with ten-five-year options. In our lifetime, the impact on Colonial Drive without interparcial access will be just that forever, forever, or in our lifetime. The other thing is, we have tried our hardest with the neighborhood in our mind. Like I said, I, I was born and raised here. My kids were born and raised here. Their grandparents live here. We have designed a building that I think all of us would be proud of. We are bordered by railroad track and a historic neighborhood that I was born and raised in. This is our chance to set a stage for what we want. And so, I just appreciate the time. There's so many things I could answer, um, but we have worked hard. We've tried to include everybody. We even used the planner that designed the overlay in the meeting that Mr. Miller couldn't come to and Mr. Blumenthal's representative did. We, we used Kimberly Horn. So, we've done everything we can, y'all. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. Well, this, we'll go ahead and, uh, close the public comment, but we, uh, still reserve the ability to ask any questions we have of, uh, anyone that spoke or of staff or legal counsel. So, go ahead and open it up to the board for discussions or questions. Who wants to go first? I'll, I'll go first. Um, I'm extremely conflicted on this case. Uh, I, you know, a lot of the information and feedback that we were, um, we got from residents and the seventy-some odd emails that we got about this case was, "We don't need another drugstore." Well, that's, that's not for the ZBA to decide. That's got absolutely nothing to do with the situation. The fact is, there is a, a piece of property there, and whoever owns that property, um, has the right to put the business that they want on it as long as it conforms with the zoning district. Um, I, I, I think that we have, so we have dual opposition to this proposal. Uh, you've got the opposition of several neighbors that we heard from that don't want any access on Colonial because they don't want more traffic coming back into their neighborhood. I, I understand their point completely. Um, and then you've got the, the folks that put together the overlay and are extremely supportive of the overlay, don't want any access on Peachtree. Um, I understand their passion for that as well. Um, but I think we as a board have got to come to some sort of compromise on this situation. Um, it, it does not appear to me that there has been much movement in the way of negotiation, um, between all of the property owners, but there, there seems to have at least been some discussions between the Walgreens and Mr. Blumenthal. Um, I'd like to hear some feedback from everyone else as to what their thoughts are, but...
A question for the, the applicant. Someone brought up a point of the, uh, the parking decks, decks not being connected. You can't go from one level to the other within the deck. Is that just a design problem, space problem, just can't be done?
Well, we had a parking shortfall already, Mr. Blumenthal, so, um, as I understand it, and I'm going to ask Abdul to confirm this if I'm wrong, is that the second level comes up for the office primarily, the lower level comes in for the retail, and if we went out to the right-in, right-out on Peachtree, we would lose additional parking spaces. So, since we're already under park, they felt like it was better to have the office primarily concentrate on the second level and the retail on the first, although there will be office at the park on the first level as well.
And then the other comment about, um, this being contingent on, on getting a shared driveway, is that something you guys would entertain?
Well, what we had offered was at the time when, when Mr. Blumenthal and the Martins could work out a shared driveway-
Will you see that diagram again, please?
Yeah. Is this right? Is this right?
Yes.
So, our discussion-
A little bit, please.
Our, our discussions with Ted, um, have been, there exist in driveways in here somewhere. So, we move over to a shared drive just to service the Martin track, and in so doing, because they're going to lose some parking over here, we would agree with a private agreement, because I don't think y'all can make the decision of approval, but we would agree to give them, I think there's ten parking spots here off of our property to accommodate and give them increased parking for the subway. Okay? Now, um, the issue that we've got with subway-
That would be an easement.
Uh, it'd be a cross-parking agreement, I think. Yeah, I, I, you're a real safety guy, but I think it'd just be, I think it'd be a cross-parking agreement. Uh, and it would be, yeah, it would take an easement or something. Um, but we would, we would give them, uh, ten additional spaces because they would lose some spaces that are currently on the west side, I mean, the east side of their, of their property for the driveways, thinking in terms that we need to put driveway as close to their property line here in order to maximize development opportunities on, on the Martin track. Now, we had, we had agreed to that. Um, Mr. Blumenthal had, had agreed that that would be a good concept, uh, Mr. Blumenthal, after Ted talked to him, was on, had agreed to that.
But that would be a full access, uh, on the shared driveway to the right-in, right-in, right-out?
It would be a full, it would be a full access here, right-in, right-out here, as opposed to three full accesses that exist today.
But there would not be any interparcial access.
Would not be any, any interparcial access. And that's primarily because of the pressure it puts on Colonial.
Pressure on Colonial on that as well as the traffic in the area where most of the destiny-
Well, and safety as far as folks walking across the park line.
Let me ask one other question. Since there, there does seem to be some sort of an open line of communication, um, with, um, Mr. Blumenthal, um, is there a possible redesign if we put a shared drive on the property line between those two properties?
It'd have to be full access.
Sure.
And I think it's too close to the light.
Got full access there right now?
No, but I, but we're moving. It's not the same, it's not the same.
Moving further away.
We're moving further, we're moving further away. Uh, I don't know the answer to that. Abdul, would you-
Well, first and foremost, we'll lose, if you move it, you lose all those parks right there, the ones that we would give to Mr. Blumenthal as well as the ones for Walgreens. So, you'd actually even shrink the site down.
We'd lose one park. I want to hear from Mr. Sandler.
A couple of points. Um, on behalf of, um, Mark Blumenthal, he started in two thousand and seven responding to Walgreens when they were on contract through a different developer. They had a lease to buy this. We worked out two different site plans that we were agreeable to, to put the, put the drive, we either split down the property line or one side of the other with, with an access easement between the two. Um, that's something that, that we supported. We understand there's too many driveways out here and too close to the space. But the one thing you have to recognize is that what's happened here is, Mark Blumenthal is the one who has compromised. All we've done is agreed to have our driveway closed and moved to some future location that we don't know will ever come to pass. There's been no change in the Walgreens site plan from what you saw two months ago. It's the same, as far as the layout is the same. And what David has basically made it our burden by, by having us lose, give up our driveway and move to a future location, what we don't, like I said, there's no agreement with Mrs. Martin. She has no obligation to give anybody an easement, um, and, um, you just don't know if this would be built.
We understand and cannot condition on closing current driveways to Subway.
Right.
We got that. This is a proposal, I think, that the developer came, developer came up with as a concession to help a joint driveway on the Mark Blumenthal property, and I think, you know, it certainly has merit. It gives your client circulation around this building, which he doesn't have today.
And, and, and again, there are benefits to it. We agree. We went into this meeting, and we're open to continued discussion with, uh, with the Gibsons and with Doug. Um, we went into the same, we acknowledge there needs to be shared access here. This is something that benefits, the city benefits all the property owners. It's just that, um, it's easy to commit, "We're going to do this in the future," when you don't have the ability to do it because you don't know if Mrs. Martin will ever agree to it. Um, they did agree that they would pay for that driveway if it was to be built, that we wouldn't have to bear the cost, that they would pay for that driveway up through, and the property line cuts through the, the very portion, all that property is not Mark Blumenthal's.
Yeah.
It's a little short of that, but they would pay for that driveway.
They?
They, being the Gibsons, agreed that they would pay for that if this comes to pass. The problem is, again, we just, there's no way to control what will happen out here in the future, and we're just concerned about immediately what, if these two driveways have to do side by side. But to answer your question initially, yes, we were open to and are designs to have the, um, the curb cut straddling the property line or just on one side of the other, but that was with just Walgreens with less density and less parking requirements.
Yes, that, that, that proposal did not have two levels of office on top of it, which is consistent with what the overlay requiring, requiring some additional top. I think the previous plan had sort of a fake second level to try to get beyond that. This is real office, two levels of office.
Mr. Dillard, could you address Ms. Dunleavy's comment about the mass of the project? My understanding is that part of the mass of the project is overlay driven.
It's all overlay driven.
The three stories.
Yeah, the whole thing's overlay driven, and we're four percentage points above on the gross, and so, it's just not that significant. But, but the overlay requires that we have office on top of retail and, and that we have at least two stories in order to justify. We need to have two levels of office and one level given the cost and expense, and that's why we need the party barriers, which they didn't ask for before because all they wanted was a drugstore, and the overlay wants more than that.
I don't have any more to go with. I have a question for, uh, our legal counsel. Um, and so- In several of the...
We'll leave that one.
Letters we heard from, correspondence we received in opposition to this, basically stated that none of the variances met the criteria of the zoning board appeals. I'd like to hear your opinion on how this particular parcel does meet the criteria or if it does not meet the criteria.
They are correct that there are five standards, five criteria that you're supposed to look at, but I think what's getting confused is the first one, that there's actually two subjective determinations you make at the same time. It's not just about the size of the lot or the conditions of the lot, it's whether those conditions make it such in the zoning district that it's in. So, in this case, we're in commercial zoning. Does the fact that the size of the lot impact a commercial development in that zoning? Let me know if you're not following me, and I'll try to rephrase it. And so, your job as the fact finders is to look at what the applicant has put in the application and the record, what was presented during the public hearing, to determine based on each of these five criteria, is there any evidence that supports each of them? That's a subjective determination for you to make individually based on your review of the record.
So, you're saying that the criteria number one, which I think is the one that's the one in the model community, you're saying that because it is a C1 zoning...
That you would compare it to other C1 zoning parcels? And is, this, this determination's going to be different every time, because every time, every case that comes before you, there's going to be things that are specific to that particular block, specific to that particular parcel?
So, the fact that it's on a corner lot, the fact that it has railroad in the back, the fact that it has a state highway in the front, which requires you go to DOT for curb cuts?
Exactly. Whereas other, other parcels on Peachtree may be different, that, I mean, that's within your discretion to decide.
So, is it fair to say if there isn't anything exceptional about the size of the lot, because there aren't, things are exceptional about the lot in general?
That, that is something that you're going to have to decide.
And, and you don't have to read this code section to say that those listed items are the only ones that could make it exceptional. Those are some, but not an exclusive list.
I'm sure I understood that, that comment, so I don't want to respond.
The, the, the code section reads, "By reason of exceptional narrowness, shallness, or shape of a specific block, or by reason of exceptional topographic conditions which are not created by the applicant, the strict application of requirements of chapter would deprive the owner of rights." The drillage is joined by other property owners in the same zoning district.
You would make those two considerations together instead of making two, is that, can you see what I'm saying? You have to look at the size of the lot based on the other ones in that, that zoning district, and look at that in combination, right, to determine whether it's exceptional or not.
So, you could say that the railroad tracks make it shallow, or the, the fact that they, you know, haven't been able to acquire any adjoining properties on the side make it narrow or something?
Or you could just add the other way?
Certainly the narrowness, you know, to, to require 700 feet between curb cuts and the overlay, if you don't own 700 feet, that's an exceptional situation.
There just needs to be evidence that you found in the record to support your decision for each of these.
I'd like to point out that this, this property has been essentially underutilized, it's got, it's been a fire on it. This owner has owned it for a long time, this owner has been before various boards. This owner is a local developer, they've done a, a great deal of work in trying to address our comments. We have staff recommending approval. Ms. Dunleavy's concern about the mass of the project, well, the overlay requires a mass of the project. There isn't enough room, or they haven't the legal ability to do a joint driveway. They tried this orange provision conceding an easement for parking spaces to help get a future driveway. If there was a way we can incorporate some of that as a condition, I don't know, I'm going to work on that, but it is an exceptional site, I think, as a commercial site, for reasons that vary dramatically from residential sites. Again, we've got staff recommending approval. And, and on this curb cut, a right in, right out relieves traffic on Colonial Drive to a great degree. You certainly don't want trucks coming out on Colonial. This puts, requires all the trucks leaving the site to come, to go out on Peachtree, you know? Without the right in, right out there, it would clearly increase the traffic on Colonial. I would like to see, and I'm going to propose a condition that requires a right turn lane be developed off of Colonial headed to Peachtree. If, if there can be a right turn lane, that will decrease the stacking on Colonial, particularly if and when this property across the street, the old tasting sites gets developed, and that site becomes a target for people coming from Colonial, so it'll be more people wanting to go straight, and it'll be harder to make a right turn there. I think a right turn lane is something we should consider requiring. But again, I'm, I'm driven by the fact that this is a site where they, the developer have done, you know, everything I, I can see for them to do to address the concerns we've had, at least maybe 90% of the way there, and sometimes near yet to 100%, but I think it's a very worthy proposal and one we need to be considering supporting with some additional conditions.
And, and for me, as I look through this, you know, of the nine requests, most of them, in my view, are venomous. I agree with staff recommendations on all of them. The only one I'm struggling with is the curb cut issue. It, I don't know if there's a consideration that this is a fully baked, make one more run at trying to figure out a way to do a shared driveway, give it more time, or if that's just a waste of time, we don't want to waste anybody's time.
There's limitations on the subway building where it is.
Yeah.
You know, it's a very, talk about a narrow, shallow site. Their, they, you know, their business can't be disrupted, and they can't agree to, like Mr. Sandel said, something in the future. However, the concessions the developers offering to Blumenthal's to help their site, you know, those are me. Sorry, Don.
No, that was just, that's the, the standard of my comments, that's the, that's the thing I'm struggling with the most. I'm just throwing it out there, I don't know what time helps or if that's something that no one here wants to hear.
Well, there's currently three full access sites, left in, left out, left everything, both from this site and the Blumenthal site and the Martin site, three of them. Cutting one of them down to right in, right out is a good start. And again, without that, the traffic on Colonial will be worse. I'm sure the neighborhood, I saw some head shaking, but I don't see how the neighborhood could deny that.
I have a question from Ms. Dunleavy.
Yeah.
Hi. What is the ideal situation where, Maya?
The ideal situation, well, I represent the BPCA, so we are not property owners. Our concern is the sanctity of the overlay, and, you know, the, the massing of this building is driving this. The overlay doesn't say you have to have three stories. The overlay says you have to have two stories. So, ideally, we would like to see the density reduced, because we think that the density on this site is driving a lot of the need for other variances, such as the parking, the lot coverage, the problem with the parcel access, because you've got so much traffic going in and out of the site. Perhaps with reducing into a two-story building, you could also work so that you had circulation of the parking deck totally interior to the side. What's going on now is people who go up to the top of this deck, and the deck is full, they'll have to come back down and out Colonial and around again. You're going to have traffic circulating off-site to accommodate the traffic on the side.
Really think people who can't, can't find a place in, if they can't find a place in the upper deck, they're going to find one in the lower deck? The lower deck would fill up first, then people would go to the upper deck.
But if, if that is also full, and this is something that Mr. Appicora, I'm not a traffic engineer, but Mr. Appicora, who was here the last time, was presented a, a study to all, indicating that in his opinion, that sort of circulation would occur, that they're using Colonial as a sort of off-site way to circulate traffic in and out of the site. That's not a desirable thing, regardless of how you feel about Peachtree curb cut alleviating traffic on Colonial, that certainly doesn't alleviate traffic on Colonial. So, we certainly believe that they could reduce the density and alleviate the need for lot experiences. We would very much like to see continued discussion with respect to interparcial access and with respect to shared drives. We don't think that that has, those discussions have gone far enough. Unfortunately, 60 days was not long enough to accomplish that and get everybody to the table, to get the stakeholders. They indicated that they contacted a planner at Kinley Ford. We contacted that planner at Kinley Ford, and we got a proposal from, from that planner and asked that planner to sit down with all of the stakeholders. I firmly believe that if a meaningful effort, not a check-the-box effort, was made to engage these property owners, that a better plan could come up, and without all of these variances, and be more consistent with the overlay. We're concerned about eviscerating the overlay with all of these variances. We think that's what we're doing.
So, if I understand you correctly, what you're saying is that if they reduce the size of the development, that will alleviate a lot of the parking situation, and you don't believe that there would, that would be the need for a curb cut on Peachtree?
I haven't done that analysis, but we would like to be able to explore that. I guess I'm just taking issue with the notion that somehow this property owner or this developer can't control the mass of this building because the overlay requires him to have two stories of office, and the square footage that he's asking for, the overlay doesn't require that.
So, overlay requires the first floor of office, I'm sorry, the first floor of retail, the second floor of office?
Right, it requires a mixture of views. It doesn't specify how much square footage of this use you need to have, and it doesn't specify that you've got to have a three-story office building, oh, sorry, a three-story building with a drugstore and drive-through, and all of the other components that are in this development. And that's why I make the statement that this development is just too big for this site, and that's what creates the hardship. Thanks.
I'd like to ask you a question real quick. What's your opinion on parking deck screen facing Colonial as a safety issue?
I'm not sure that I really have one, quite honestly. I've been looking at other issues, so I'm not really sure that I have one.
I mean, I guess I'm just trying to, you know, look at, look at all the different variances, and, you know, one of the items is parking, is doing a second-story fenestration on the parking deck, which to me seems like an obvious safety issue that we brought up by Ronnie Mayer in, in the last meeting, surprised to come here tonight.
Maybe at the old location, so he's known.
He's coming to my meeting. And, you know, and, and I guess I bring that up because maybe there are some flaws in the overlay that need to be addressed.
I, I'm not going to dispute that, but it does concern me when you have an applicant who stands up and says, "There are flaws in the overlay, and I want you, the zoning board, to fix this," might give you any variances. The way to fix the flaws in the overlay is for the city council to change the legislation.
All right, thank you very much. I'd like to address your question as well. If the overlay requires a second floor, which it does, and then you go to the second floor, if the developer has to build this deck to get enough parking for the second floor, then you, you, you reach an econ, a larger, a greater economic cost, the decks are expensive. So, I understand your belief, just from my own personal experience working with development, that to build that deck, to make that deck, which would be required for a second floor, to make it economically feasible, you actually need a third floor. So, while Ms. Dunleavy feels like they don't need a third floor, if the overlay requires a second floor, and to have a second floor, you need a deck, maybe, you know...
I didn't get exactly what you're saying, because the economy is scary.
The, the economy is scalable, require, okay, we can't pay for the deck without the rent incurred from the third floor office. And, you know, the bulk and the appearance of this project is not inconsistent at all with what's going on in this, and, you know, it seems like a reasonable technical swit in private for this point, and certainly more compliant with the overlays and progress.
I understand what you're saying.
Well, maybe I should mention some of the conditions that I have in mind. Can I, can I make one more, can I just get one more thought? Real quick. I'm kind of in line with Don's thinking. You know, I think that possibly we need a little bit, the applicant needs a little bit more time to work, Jason, parcel owners on the curb cut issue. But I, I would, I would support several of the variances that are here now, which would have the possibility of a over, of the curb cut to try to work out some of those issues. Curb cuts essential, a project fails without a curb cut. And right in, right out is the most second you can ask. It's already limited. It relieves traffic on Colonial. I would like, as I said, I would like the board to consider an additional condition that the developer dedicate sufficient right-of-way along the total property frontage of Colonial Drive to Peachtree to add a right turn lane from Colonial to Peachtree. I think this would be one of the biggest benefits to relieve the stacking and the congestion in the intersection. So, you're saying that a right-hand turn lane to go from Peachtree? A right turn lane, I'd like to ask Mr. Meehan about the feasibility of that, I think he's going to...
Is there not one shown there?
Yeah, there is one there, there's one there.
It's a shared straight and right turn.
No, it's not, it's a dedicated right turn lane.
There are not three, there are not three lanes.
Yes, there are.
There's a shared left, there's just two, and one's right turn and one's straight or left. Yes.
There's a straight and right...
Been going in for 13 years. There's a straight and left turn lane. 13 years, same right turn lane.
Could be one more.
Mr. Meehan?
One more. This is the turn, right turn. There's a straight and left turn lane.
All right, there are two lanes. I'm saying we need a third one. I'm saying we need a right turn, a right turn, this is not a right turn only lane. Anybody who's going to Wells Park, though, could block this lane, and then somebody could drive right.
No, Mr. Chairman, if you could just point in order.
We need a factual clarification. I want to ask Mr. Meehan. He is our director of public works.
Just one moment, I'm looking up what's there now on aerial.
Okay.
Currently, what's there is striped as a dedicated left turn only lane and a shared through and right turn lane is what's there right now.
Yeah, that's not how it's striped at the light though.
It is.
It's not striped that way.
I'm looking at it on the map, so it's, that's what's on the aerial.
I drove it today, that's not how it's bright white.
I saw that you thought it was.
We have a, there's a plaque, is there a plaque? Can you bring out your plaque, Abdul?
Well, he was out this morning, so I'm going to let Abdul tell you what he just... Thank you again, I was there this morning, standing there for several, good bit of time. What we have out there, I think it's really visible in this picture, because it's up there again. You see on the ground right here, it's the strategy for a shared through and right turn lane, and there is a left turn lane. So, it's a three-lane road, one going away from Peachtree, the other two lanes approaching Peachtree, one of which is striped as a left turn lane, and then the other one is striped as a through, shared through and a right turn lane. One thing I do want to point out, in my data collection work, there was one car observed going straight from that shared lane in the morning hours, 8:00 AM to 9:00 AM. going straight from that shared lane in the morning hours, eight AM to nine AM, and there were five cars during the period, one hour between 5:00 PM to 6:00 PM going straight. So this lane essentially operates as a de facto right turn lane, and unless something huge truly happens across the road, I really don't see the need for a right turn lane because it is essentially a right turn lane right now for all raccoons.
Something huge may happen across the road, and it may be fine, you think it's not a problem. Again, I'm just trying to think ahead. We have enough, they're going to place a building on this intersection if, if they get enough variance to do so, and if that building is placed in a way that would prohibit a right turn lane, we're losing a major future benefit for this, this intersection. And I still would like Mr. Meehan to comment on what would be a reasonable requirement, maybe for the developer, to provide room for a right turn only lane, presuming that that straight lane is going to get nothing but more use as the Hastings property is developed. And with one owner, there will be interparcial access on that side.
With, as far as what's there now, right now, there's about thirty-six feet of pavement out there right now, and with reduced lanes, with prob, with reduced width lanes, which would be feasible in that area, we probably need about another eight or nine feet of pavement in order to add an additional lane in there to have a three-lane approach, plus the one lane southbound on Colonial.
And it's a sixty-foot right-of-way?
It is a sixty-foot right-of-way, yes.
Does the city have any plans to do any intersection improvements at this intersection?
As of right now, we don't, do not, but we are in the process of going through our comprehensive transportation plan, which is, will identify any future projects that the city may undertake right now.
Do you have any funds available for intersection improvement?
Not at this time, or not under our current budget, I mean, it's always up to the city council, obviously, budget for future projects.
No, on the other day's funds, in your department at all?
Not for intersection improvements.
How about DOT funding?
Always possible, but it's usually a long process to go through to get it on.
I'd like to hear the applicant's comments on the right turn lane.
Our information indicates that you've got the right-of-way, might have to take a little bit off Starbucks, but we would, I'm talking about public right-of-way, dedicated public right-of-way today, and I say all Starbucks, all Starbucks side, okay, and we will pay for those intersection improvements.
Okay, so my question for Mr. Meehan is, would the developer need to dedicate any additional right-of-way or give up any land to accommodate a right turn lane? That's your calculation.
They could do it, like you're saying, it could be, sixty feet should be enough to fit in forty-foot a right-of-way plus the ten, or forty-foot of pavement plus the ten-foot pedestrian zones on each side of the road, it would barely fit in, but it would, that would accomplish the, the approach, within the sixty, existing sixty-foot a right-of-way.
Okay. How about moving the, there's a, there's a major pole that holds up the turn signal that's clearly in the right-of-way, that would have to be moved. Is that a part of city's responsibility if the developer makes accommodations, or how does that work?
It would be part of, if the pole's in the way, it would have to be moved. I mean, usually with those, it's whoever's doing the intersection improvements would have to, you know, reconfigure whatever poles that are there.
Mr. Dillard, did you say that your client would pay for the reconstruction of the intersection, but they didn't have to dedicate right-of-way, clarify to you?
You know, yeah, I think we would, we will do that. I'm not going to sacrifice this project over one lane and a power pole, but relocating those power poles, particularly along Peachtree, is not an inexpensive situation. We would certainly like the option to work, work with Georgia Power in order to try to work out some, something meaningful, but we don't want to, we're not going to jeopardize this project because we can't make these construction improvements that are sustainable for Peachtree.
While the guy's up there, do you believe there's any value to a curb ring?
No. Look, I've called these folks, I mean, I hadn't heard anything tonight, it's ended over sixty days ago, and we've tried to have these meetings, and, and the preservation group doesn't want to meet, and they're not at the table, and we can't get everybody to the table. So, you know, the only meaningful discussion we really had was with Ted and Mr. Blumberg. So I don't think a deferral does, does seem good. You know, I, I always would prefer to work, work out an agreement, that's what, what we do, but, and we would want to do that if there's some meaningful movement, but I haven't heard anything tonight that indicates that anybody's really moved, except, except us. We, we're the ones that came with the new plan, we're the ones that have made changes based on staff recommendations, we're the ones that are agreeing to make intersection improvements. I haven't heard a movement from anybody outside Mr. Bulleye House. While I would welcome an opportunity to resolve this in an amicable way and with everybody's agreement, I just, I don't, I don't think, plus, we've got some contract issues we have to deal with too, as far as that.
Mr. Dillard, you said that you're unable to get everyone to the table. I know that there have been several meetings, specific, there's a specific owner or property owner that's been unable or unwilling, or is it time constraint?
Everyone will.
Thank you.
We had sixty days, wait until next time.
What I meant was a, a calendar coordination?
No, we made ourselves available, made my office available. We actually had a meeting with, with Ms. Dunn's group and with Mr. Sandler, but Mr. Martin and Ms. Miller refused.
Thank you.
I'm Steve Brothman, on behalf of...
Mr. Miller, so I'm driving home the point I made at the beginning of this. Mr. Miller met with Mr. Gibson, so to say that he was unwilling is inaccurate. Gibson said, "We're not changing the plan."
Well, they did change the plan, though.
He said, "We are not changing the plan to my client," told him that several times, "and then he said, 'You can come to a meeting, but you need to pay $3,000 to be here.'"
Is this before our last hearing?
After, after our last hearing.
Were you present at the...
I was not, no, no lawyers were there. So he didn't want to, although it, there's no dispute that the role was to pay $3,000, and then we'll do a master plan. And let me say also this, Mr. Miller was involved and wanted to master plan the whole, all the lots in 2012, and he was told by the Walgreens, he quotes, "Get out." In fact, what he was told is, "We will assess the damages you caused by talking about master planning this." This was years ago, 2012. Now, and so he got, he got out. Now he's in a point with his development where he's not on his timetable, ready to design a site plan. He's just not there.
So Mr. Miller is a contract holder?
That's correct.
How long does this contract last? How much longer?
I'm not, I don't know how long he's got with his contract. And frankly, at this point, I think it's unfair to expect of him or from somebody to put the black hat on him because he's not ready to design his project now.
We're not asking your client for anything.
I just wanted to make...
At this point, this, none of these variances ask your client, do you agree?
All right.
Perfect, that's all.
I'd like to, I'd like to make a motion, as it may be.
Do we want to do it one variant at a time?
Well, that's what I'm trying to figure out. I'm wondering if we can do it based on, the motion would be to adopt everything the staff recommends, plus, plus a couple of conditions, or we could do it one at a time? Does staff have a preference, as far as keeping the record on this?
Mr. Chairman, I would recommend that you move it down.
Okay, I can do them one at a time. My motion would be to approve variance number one, as stated and as approved by the staff. Variance number two...
So we need to go ahead and vote?
Are you meaning to vote on all of them one at a time?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
I have a question. Earlier, we mentioned that there's no curb cut on Peachtree, this project...
Want to vote on the curb cut?
Well, I'm inclined to support a deferral in the parking situation.
I don't think we can defer it.
Are we able to defer, or are we able to defer the entire case?
You need to defer the entire case. I think it's okay for you to identify your position on each particular variance, but at the end, take your vote, because you have conditions that may or may not be tied to those conditions. So I think as you go through each one, at the end of the items, if you could make your vote and then identify any conditions that you choose to either include or not include.
Well, maybe it would be best to come to the vote on, on the curb cut request first? You said you want us to vote one at a time. I guess I had not been...
I think it's okay to go through each item and not take your vote, go to the end of the review of each item, and then take your vote on the case, and then identify any conditions, you know, whether you're going to make a motion for approval or denial. At the end of the day, whatever your vote is, you need to identify what conditions go with the action that you propose.
What the conditions of, I was going to do on a variance per variance basis. That's the way to condition the staff. If any of the, if the motion or if the variance plus fails, a secondary motion would be taken for the vote.
I mean, obviously, we're not looking with the board tonight, so, you know, I just think that we should be very deliberate in how we approach this, because you don't want to negatively impact...
If you would like to take each one of these one at a time, you would just need to make sure that if you do that, you attach the conditions. The fear with doing them not collectively is that particular point, so if it's, if it's better for the board to deliberate on each one one at a time, if you do that, please address the conditions each time, so that we make sure those are all captured.
But you're saying that if we do vote on them and attach the conditions one at a time, is it possible to defer one of the items?
No.
No, sir.
My intent is to make a motion that allows for, to approve these variances with the conditions, okay? So I would like to go through them one at a time, attach the conditions. I think we've discussed all the conditions, I think we're focusing on probably only two or three that I have any concerns associated with. So we addressed, and then I have the right, this additional condition for the right of... But I don't think we can just vote, I don't, it's not my proposal to vote on it one at a time, and I mean, so I'd like to go through them, attach the conditions, and then have one vote, okay? You all can vote it down if you want, but I'm trying to make this. The questions, I think, are called by your partners. So variance number one, approved per the staff report. There are no conditions on that, correct? Okay.
So I would say condition one will apply.
Okay, I see what you mean.
Let me ask for legal interpretation one more time. If it's Mr. Meehan's intent to make a motion on, on everything collectively, if ever, can he not make a motion striking the, the variances he want and condition everything to the eight conditions the claim is set for, plus his condition of providing a right-of-way to provide for, for the developer to write?
Yes, but you just want to be clear that if there's some, that has something else that you're allowing?
So, yeah, I think you said through here and said, I suppose, for a little one or two.
And then it's additions. Yeah, I think that's right. Okay, my motion is to approve, approve variance number one, approve variance number two, and that includes the current fenestrations and what the, what the applicant called the, facade design.
Is that the May fifth design?
Yes.
Thank you.
May fifth design on the parking deck screen. Approve variance number three, approve variance number four, right-in, right-out Peachtree Road, approve variance number five, thirty-foot curb cut. They basically said that the building entrance would be full access on Peachtree, and that that's been withdrawn, so we don't need to approve variance number six. We approve, would be to approve variance number, well, number seven is the same, no variance needed, so no, no action on six, no action on seven. Approve eight, approve nine. I want to, I have my motion is to adopt staff condition number one, it's to delete staff condition number two, which their traffic engineer recommended, to adopt staff conditions three through eight, and to add, to add, add two more conditions. Number nine would be, the owner developer shall construct a right turn lane at the Colonial Drive and Peachtree Road intersection, connection in conjunction with requirements of the Corrector Public Works. And another condition, ten, in the event that a future common drive is ever developed between the subway and the Martin property, the Blumenthal and the Martin property, that it would require the applicant to provide, basically provide parking easement according to that plan right there. So the portion of that plan on the left where it says ten spaces, et cetera, would be to make the tenth condition that the developer would, would basically preserve the ability to grant that easement in the future, provided that the common driveway between, shared driveway between the Martin and the Blumenthal property is, is created. That's my motion. Do you have any questions?
I don't have any questions, sir. All right, so we have a motion on the floor, I hope everybody understands what I'm repeating. So the motion does. Do I hear a subsequent motion?
I think a motion of a crawl sixty days.
Do I hear a second?
A second.
We have a motion of a second for a sixty day referral. Any discussion?
Am I? I don't know. I don't know what's going to change in sixty days. I don't see. I think it's just a waste of time. We've had an hour and a half, two hours.
I think this is a very important decision, and I know they're under some constraints over there. We've got a short board, sixteen days, so we'll put it out in front of the board. I just think it's worthwhile opportunity for everybody to get together, to camp, to camp. We've made it the best year.
Yeah, I think that. I think that, yeah, the reason why your motion didn't receive a second is because we believe there is a sliver of hope that some sort of agreement can reach the owner of the property and the campus consultation with the with the homeowners. But in the event that all those people do not come to the table, I think. You're direct. I think everybody needs to come to the table with serious compromise. My only question, do we need to do sixty or thirty days?
You have a big agenda next month, you know, mostly, mostly been discussed. I'd be glad to amend it or to the next meeting, I should say, for over most. We did begin that all these parties enough times.
I mean, I think that.
What are we asking them to do? Tell them you've got to, oh, tell them what you want them to do. So that they have a goal and a agenda.
I think that.
We can't hear. We can't hear unless you have the mic to use.
I would I would say that. You know, the point I'm at right now is. I don't think that we can not allow access to this development on the Peachtree. I think it puts too much of an impact into the neighborhood that is behind it to make the access solely on Colonial. I think it's a safety issue for the neighborhood, and I would like to see the adjacent property owners work on a a shared drive solution, possibly along the property line or something to that degree. Or we're going to have no no choice but from a safety standpoint, make it so that, you know, we're not causing further congestion and traffic at that light at Colonial and pushing it back into the neighborhood. So I would say the impetus is is on all of the property owners and all of the community stakeholders to get together and get on this.
If we're going to defer. I'd like to see a plan that includes a ramp from the top deck down to the Peachtree right in, right out. And if that means redesigning the ramp from Colonial maybe to up only and down the other way, or if that means they lose a few more parking places, then amend their parking variance. I'd like to see an alternative that includes a driveway down from the upper deck that will allow the parkers and that will allow the upper deck people going north on Peachtree also not to come along Colonial.
And and I think if we're talking about that type of redesign, which I don't disagree with, that we probably need to stick with the sixty day as first suggestion.
I think we argue them sixty days.
All right. Any more discussion? All those in favor of a sixty day referral, in this case, please stick and raise your hands, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Case is so preferred.
You want sixty?
To a date certain, you'll want sixty. All right. Moving on to new business. Our first case of new business this evening is CBA fourteen dash eighteen, through Cloud TBA Waterford Homes, reduce seventy-five foot stream buffer to fifty feet, reduce side setback to seventy feet. Four feet. We'll see what happens. Lot twelve, twenty-four ninety-two. Point order, could we please exit the room in orderly manner? We've got a large document office this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Staff would stipulate the report as well as the conditions. I will quickly go over staff's recommendations. Staff has recommended, there's two plans that were submitted by the applicant, Plan A and Plan B, which will be shown on the screen. Staff has recommended board vote in favor of the requested variance to reduce the stream buffer from seventy-five feet to fifty-five feet, as shown on lot twelve, as proposed under Plan B, and vote to deny the requested variance to reduce the side yard setback from seven and a half feet to four feet on lot twelve, as proposed under Plan A, with three conditions as recommended by this by staff. Thank you.
All right, could the, could that, could please come forth?
Hi, thank you for hearing my case tonight. Waterford Homes proposed at the staff's direction two different plans. Plan A was to build wider homes and shallower homes that would encroach less into the stream buffer. Plan B was to build skinnier but deeper homes, and in the Plan B scenario, we do not need any side setback variances. We are happy with either plan. We proposed two scenarios just to show that we were exhausting all efforts to come up with some sort of solution, some sort of reasonable solution. We believe we've done that, and we appreciate the the staff and the board taking their time to look at this carefully and and understand that we do have a hardship here. So I will reserve the rest of my time for rebuttal. Thank you. Thank you very much.
How much time?
Nine minutes on second.
Okay. All right. Do we have any speaker cards, pretty much in support of the application?
Yes, sir.
All right. Any speaker cards in opposition to the application?
We have four. One will like to read to the record.
Okay. All right.
The developer created, this is Jenny Troutman. The developer created the hardship by subdividing the lot. Please do not approve development in the stream buffer or reduce the side lot setbacks. Next speaker is Thomas Porter.
Okay.
My name is Thomas Porter. I still live at fourteen twenty Kanuji Drive. Simply put, this is a this is a variance that is coming before you tonight. It was previously asked by the applicant to waive the lot merger. That was granted. At that time, it was pretty much apparent that this was not going to be an easily buildable lot without further variances. Now we are at that point where we're asking for further variances where the applicant is. The the fact of the matter is that Brookhaven Fields is a community of non-standard size homes. The homes in Brookhaven Fields run from nine hundred square feet to five thousand, six thousand square feet. So the aspect of of the builder with two stock plans chucking him on a site plan and saying that, see, it doesn't work, I still need a variance, I don't think is reasonable or germane. And and the other aspect of it, because he can build something. If you look at the south part, the the house sheet south of that, it is a much less deep house, and that's been a recently built house. So the aspect of of intruding into the stream buffer, I think, is terrible. And and as a neighborhood, and I speak with a great number of our my neighbors, I think that the the neighborhood feels besieged by variances. I I think that Brookhaven Fields and the area where I live is probably more under siege than almost any other section of the town. And lastly, I think that a I think that anybody who chooses to live in our neighborhood has a reasonable expectation that the ordinances that are in effect guide their future and and qualify their their way of life. And if every variance, regardless of time of purchase, gets approved, then I think that you have taken that away from the citizens. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Porter.
Fergus Thomas.
So, good evening. So I I live two four eight eight LJ. So I'm the house right next door here and definitely oppose the the variance. So mainly, I have some pictures. I don't know where the, I think ours.
Just put it on that table. Set it down.
So. That zooms in. So there is a creek running behind it. This is showing the creek, kind of, or seeing more and more flooding in this creek, and especially this in the last eight months. So at the back of our property, there is a water main, which all the houses drain back into that water main. So the concern on the side setback is for access back into this property to actually service that that water main, which is sitting right really close to that that river and that river's flooding. So that's my concern on the side setback. We have a couple other pictures since on diagrams looks a little different. So that's me and my kids, and you can kind of see the pole. That would be where the actual house would sit, so it would make it virtually impossible for any sort of equipment to get into the back of this property or any of the properties to fix any of that water main that's going on. So that's on the side setback. My concern on the back setback with that creek, we did some measurements. So one is there is a beautiful, huge water road that's sitting back there that unfortunately the barbecue house was built right next to. So what that is showing right there, if you zoom in a little, is where the fifty-foot mark is, and it's well within the tree canopy. So we have a couple other pictures, though. This is the base of that house, or the base of that outhouse, the barbecue house, that's sitting within a foot of it. And then this is a picture basically of the fifty fifty-foot mark, which what you see is that variance would put that house underneath the tree canopy. The excavation work that would have to happen would damage the root system and topple basically an eighty-foot tree, which obviously I don't think anybody wants. So I guess on the setback, what we did.
Which lot is that tree?
That's on their lot. So right on.
Twelve or eleven?
I think it's twelve. So this next picture is kind of showing seventy-five feet back. Seventy-five feet back is pretty much in line with every other house that is sitting there. So where they're proposing to go back to the back of the house is essentially.
Thirty-five.
Back out to the back of that deck. So what I'd ask for is the side, the back setback to be pushed forward back up. I think seventy, seventy-five feet is reasonable. Also, when they're pulling down that outhouse, that they adhere to the ordinance, which is there's no heavy equipment used back there and pulling that down by hand so that we don't destroy the tree. So that's what I'd ask.
Thank you very much.
David and Kelly Combs.
David Combs, and I'm with a two four eight seven directly across the street from the lots that are being repurposed right now. Those lots originally were one lot with one home on that. And it was requested that the lots be subdivided. It was pretty much as a fact that they would come back and request additional variances. That's what they've done. Concerns that I have and many in the board have, and we've received a number of meetings, we should have, it's in the air. The concerns that we have is twofold. One is on the side yard setbacks. Tonight, you have four properties requesting side yard setbacks from seven and a half feet to four or five feet. The perceived perception in our community is that there's a lot of variances coming in, a lot of builders that see our area desirable and are wanting to make a lot of changes that are changing the look, the feel, the conditions of our community in order to maximize the size of the home, in order to maximize their profit, their their profits, which of course is impacting, again, the look, the feel of our community. We're concerned with that. When you see in one night in our own community, four four lots being asked for side yard setbacks, that's pretty concerning, but this is not the first time and won't be. But as soon as you start to accept these, and as soon as you start to approve these, these start to become the conditions of the community, and you start setting the precedence. So we are concerned with that. Secondly, with the backyard setback, going from seventy-five to fifty-five feet, we'll go into that where that tree is. That tree is a major absorption for the area. We've had the the very large apartments that have blown in. That has created additional flooding in an area that's already been experiencing a lot of flooding the last several years. Now with the additional homes that are going in and the trees being cut down, we have more flooding. This now, you take a large tree like this out, and you're adding to that element. We have so much flooding that some houses at the very end towards the intersection of Cardaque and LJ get get water into their homes when we had excessive rains. The what the intersection there, the four ways stop, the water will actually come up over the creek bed into the street, okay, because it cannot handle all the water. So if we continue to build these larger homes, continue to push further into our stream buffers, we're going to continue to exacerbate the problem. So what we're asking you is to take that in consideration and please answer to us.
Thank you very much. Do we have any other speaker cards? All right. I believe that the applicant has time reserved for a vote.
Thank you. To address the first speaker card, that the developer created the hardship, that's actually not the case. The owner of the property applied for the waiver of the lot merger. Waterford Homes is has come in after the fact, so that's not actually the case. I'd like to address a concern that both the third and the fourth speakers had, which is regarding the side setbacks. The Plan B, which is the plan that the staff recommends that we're happy with, does not require any reduction in the side setbacks. So I think that should alleviate that concern. I would also like to point out that the tree in question is absolutely not going to be taken down by our construction. They may not have looked at the site plan closely, but if you do look at the site plan, and we didn't call out the exact distance, the distance from the back of our house to that hardwood tree is about fifty feet. Miss, the next door neighbor, Mr. Thomas, was actually looking at the actual fifty-foot setback line, and he assumed that we were building our house all the way back to that fifty-foot setback, which which is about maybe twenty feet from the tree. But the actual house that we proposed sits much farther away from that tree. That tree adds a lot of value to everyone, and we absolutely plan to keep it, and we've included a robust mitigation plan to protect the stream, and we absolutely intend to protect that tree. I'd also like to address Mr. Porter's comments. He pointed out that the next door neighbor, which is Mr. Thomas at twenty-four eighty-eight LJ, had built a significantly less deep house, and he wanted to know why he couldn't do the same. Well, if you look at the site plan, twenty-four eighty-eight LJ actually sits two point one feet from the property line, so he is significantly encroaching into the side setback, and that is the problem that you run into when you build a forty-foot white house on a fifty-foot lot. So that was part of our Plan A, which was to build houses the exact same width as twenty-four eighty-eight LJ. And in that scenario, we would in fact need to reduce the side setback from seven and a half to four feet. But based on feedback from the staff and based on everyone's concerns about the side setbacks, we are happy to comply with not reducing the side setbacks at all if the board will stipulate that we do need a little bit of help on the stream buffer. I would also like to address the concern that a number of the homes on the street have been flooding. Ben, I don't know, are you able to pull up any of the photos that were included in the in the application? that were included in the application? Well, we submitted with our application just an overhead aerial shot from the Brookhaven GIS, and it's not exactly, we obviously didn't have a survey done on every single property. It was the color photo that was in there. But 14 out of the 14 other homes on the west side of LJ, every single one is built within the 75-foot stream buffer. And some of the homes that are close to Cardadee, as the other speaker pointed out, look like they're actually about 20 to 25 feet from the actual stream. So, that's probably what drove you... So, we're actually proposing to build houses on this lot, which actually sits basically further from the stream than anybody else. So, these lots down here closer to Cardadee probably do experience flooding issues. And we believe that we are proposing to build very reasonably sized homes. In this proposal, these homes are 2,800 square feet, which we believe is on the low side of new construction in Brookhaven. And again, we're looking to just come up with some sort of reasonable compromise here. We're certainly willing to accept the proposals that the staff included. And we would just appreciate the board considering that we are in fact doing everything we can to mitigate and to reduce the side setback need and to overall work with everyone to come up with a reasonable compromise. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. We'll go ahead and close public comment, and we'll move to the board for any questions.
Just a quick question to the applicant. One of the speakers had a question on taking out the shed. Are you able to do that without having machinery?
I don't know offhand. We would certainly be willing to look into that. I mean, we absolutely plan to do what we can to keep the stream alive and it is close to it.
Can I make a comment on that, I guess?
No, sir.
No.
Not right now. But I'm sure we'll ask you some questions.
Sure.
I've got a question for staff. What is the front setback of this property?
According to the site plan submitted by the applicant, it's showing an average building setback longer from 25.6 feet.
Okay. What is the staff interpretation of what the average, or what this front setback of this property is? Because I think we need a point of reference there. With there not being anything located on either of these lots right now, is the true setback at 30 feet?
Yes, this question also comes up to the fact that it's determined based upon the facts sort of what we discussed previously, previous moment. In this case, it would depend on which property was to be developed first. But yes, in the case that we referred to, if that is the case, yes, they would have to default to the setback requirement.
So, no matter what, the first one they develop is going to have to be a 30-foot front setback?
That is correct, because obviously we discussed that we don't take an average of one.
Okay. So, we've got an issue there with what the applicant thinks they're applying the proper standard here. Do you understand the situation here? You cannot have an average of one. So, because you have a house south of you at 2488 LJ with a setback of 21.7 feet, if you were to develop Lot 12 first, you would not have any comparable on Lot 11. Therefore, you have to go with the district standard, which is a 30-foot setback, which pushes you further into the stream buffer. It makes the building box even smaller. I just want to make sure you understand.
I was not aware of that.
Okay. All right. I can't remember your name. You live at 2488?
Yes.
Okay.
Perfect.
Can I ask you a question real quick?
Sure.
If you don't want to come up? So, your home is built 21.7 feet off of the curb, and you're 2.2, 2.1 feet off the sideline. If the applicant were able to keep the plan at the seven and a half foot sideline, would you oppose a front setback variance to a distance equivalent to where your home is built?
No, absolutely not.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much. Mr. Porter?
Yes, sir.
Would you oppose a front setback variance to 21 feet in a situation like this?
Not if the stream buffer can be preserved.
Right. And I guess... I've got a compromise that's, you know... I think that... If the applicant were to withdraw his application and resubmit it under the new stream buffer, the new stream buffer ordinance, if you built a deck that was a wooden deck that had slats across it, that can impede over the 75-foot buffer in it, over the 75-foot line, it does not count as impervious coverage the way I interpret the stream buffer ordinance. Could I get a comment from staff on that? Are slatted decks allowed to extend over the 75-foot mark in the stream buffer without counting towards setback?
I'm going to have Mr. White answer that because the current ordinance is different from the ordinance that this...
I understand that. But what I'm talking about if the applicant were to withdraw and resubmit, because right now, we have no ability to grant him a... We can't, we can't grant him anything that's going to get him better than a 30-foot front setback. And I don't think that makes anyone happy.
Actually, we need to provide you with a point of clarification in that the requirement for the average front or setback that you consider on the properties on either side goes for a distance of 75 feet. These lots are actually 50 feet wide on either side. So, Mr. Song is at this moment recalculating the front setback requirement that would be in effect. So, if you can just give us a minute for that. And then while I'm talking, Mr. Bolia, you were speaking of the shed. So, I wanted to make sure I understood where you were coming from relative to your concern about the impact in the buffer and/or on the tree?
Some of the tree.
Okay, because we want to be careful that we make you aware that our arborist has visited that site and has great concerns over the health of that tree. So, just want to...
The health of the tree?
The tree is compromised, yes. So, we want you, we want you to know that, so.
It's compromised by the shattered construction of the home.
The health of the tree.
Current, it's the current condition.
The current condition of the tree. The tree is already compromised.
So, we've had an arborist out there actually concern the tree, but there's no...
Who can, who can have anyone speak with this?
Whose property is the tree on?
The tree's on the subject property, Lot 12. And Mr. Chairman, just for clarification, I did go about measuring. If I measure from the side property line on Lot 12 to the north, it actually does measure out to 75 feet. And that property to the north, which is, I guess, Lot 10, as shown as I planned, would effectively be within 75 feet. So, the average setback would apply.
Okay.
Well, by the same token, from Lot 12, would you have to count setback on 14 because it's within 75 feet? Would you have to average 14 and 13?
Yes, with Lot 12.
So, we really don't know what the front setback is going to be.
Yeah, just, I was just hoping to check if that would be correct.
I like your idea. Get all these, make sure that applicant knows what his front setback is going to be.
I just... All right. So, Mr. White, could you answer my question regarding the new stream buffer ordinance? The future cases will be determined against?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. The so-called new stream buffer ordinance considers elevated slatted decks not to be an impervious surface. Therefore, the impervious nature of it would not require a variance. However, it does prohibit land disturbance in the 75-foot buffer. So, a proposal to install an elevated slatted deck in the outer 25 feet of the stream buffer would not involve installation of impervious surface, but by its nature, most likely would involve land disturbance. So, it would at least require administrative variance.
Administrative, but not...
It would be eligible for administrative variance.
Based on the commentary that you've heard from the people that speak in opposition to your case currently, how would you feel about resubmitting with a much reduced front setback, knowing that their support is on the record for a reduced front setback to protect the stream as much as possible?
Let me add something, Mr. Chairman, to that question. You know, there's no requirement that both houses be the same design. Plan B can be used for Lot 12, and Plan A can be used for Lot 11 because of the way the setback shifts.
Well, I don't, I don't, I think Lot, Plan A would be too wide to get in without doing A.
Well, yeah, Plan A would require a side setback, but only on one lot.
Right.
And, you know, I mean, you could, then, Mr. Porter, comment about the houses looking too similar would be addressed too. But the houses could be different, one to the side setback along with the other. Still have room on one side to get back to the maintenance issue. Just an idea. What do you, what do you think?
Can I just ask a question?
Sure.
For clarification, because, you know, I think at this point, we probably need to look at the two lots separately, and there are two separate variance applications. But if I understand Ben correctly, for Lot 11, this 25.6 foot building average does in fact apply. So, we could potentially go forward with the variance request on Lot 11 and remove or postpone our variance request on Lot 12. And everything that has been stated regarding Lot 11 would not be affected. Does that make sense?
Well, I guess I don't understand. So, Lot 12 being the one on the bottom, that's the one you've got the most room to work with. Wouldn't that be the one that you would want to keep in the queue possibly?
Well, if we have the neighbor's support to move the front setback for Lot 12, and that will be greatly reduced. I'm not sure I understand, but that one's closer to fitting within the 75-foot stream buffer right now. Lot 11, there's no possibility of building a reasonably sized home on the lot without a stream buffer variance.
Mr. Chairman, we need to remain on one case, not to Lot 12.
I'm sorry. All right. So, let's just discuss Lot 12 at this point. So, you would, based on the comments that, with the neighbors being acceptable with a 21-foot front setback, and you would be able to, I guess, administratively handle your deck intrusion, the metal amount that it would be into the buffer, based on that, would you want to withdraw and resubmit that application?
Yes.
Okay. All right. So, what we need to do for the record to, we need to allow the middle or is just withdrawn at this point? All right. So, right now, ZBA 14-18, the request has been withdrawn, but...
Assuming that's what the applicant is requesting.
Okay.
Can I just confirm that the neighbor's support of the reduction of the front setback variance is officially on the record and will apply in my future case?
Even though, even though the request has been withdrawn, I would think that this is on the record, that we have the neighbor's support.
Yes, but you'll still have to have a public hearing.
Sure. We would still have to have a public hearing based on the case.
Basically change their mind in that public hearing, but you would be able to bring that past.
Okay. All right. So, based on that, I'll ask, would you like to withdraw this branch of rest?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Then now we have case ZBA 14-19. We're with ZBA Waterford Homes, reduce 75-foot stream buffer to 50 feet, and reduce side setback from seven and a half to four feet to build a single-family home on Lot 11 of 2496 LJ Drive.
So, that will stipulate to the report, and the three conditions stipulate the report as well, just for their state. That recommends the board vote in favor of Plan B and votes deny Plan A. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. Starting over. Lot 11?
Lot 11 is the significantly more difficult lot regarding the stream buffer. What we're proposing under Plan B, which the staff approved, is a 23-foot variance into the stream buffer. We understand that that would be significantly reduced if the wood slated deck is no longer counted as an impervious surface under the new ordinance. However, we do believe that regardless of that rule, it would be impossible to fit any sort of reasonably sized house on this lot without a stream buffer variance. So, we would like to move forward with requesting the plan that was approved by the staff. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone present that would like to speak in favor of the application?
No comment cards.
All right. Is there anyone that would like to speak in opposition to the application?
The first card is a request to read into the record from Ginny Troutman. The developer created a hardship by subdividing the lot. Please do not approve development in the stream buffer or reduce sidewalk setbacks. And the next speaker is Thomas Porter.
This is, I'm Thomas Porter, 1420 Canoe Street. I simply will repeat, without repeating, all the comments that I had before and reiterate that this is not a one-size-house-fits-all condition. There are many, many different sized lots there. For the economics of a developer, of a builder, to drive this is just unreasonable for the neighbors who expect that the codes apply.
Thank you, Mr. Porter.
David and Kelly Combs?
David Combs, 2487 LJ Drive, directly across the street from this property. But the concerns are still the same with the side setbacks and rear setbacks, especially on the stream buffer. Concerned with the flooding and what can be opened. So, the concerns are still the same as in 12. And we'd ask that there be some open water.
Thank you very much.
Emma Hertz.
Okay. All right. We'll go ahead and close public comment, and move to the board for discussion.
Can I go for a call?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes, sure.
Thank you. Here's Galvin.
I would just like to further clarify regarding Mr. Combs' concerns about the side setbacks being reduced under our Plan B, which we propose, we do not need any side setbacks. I would also like to point to the picture. Ben, would you mind pulling up the overhead view again? As you can see, besides our lot, 2492, the other home that is, I guess, furthest away from the stream is 2488 LJ. And as we show in our survey, even with a wider, shallower plan, his home still encroaches into the 75-foot stream buffer. So, we do not feel that there are any homes that we can come up with that are reasonably sized that would not require a... some sort of reduction in the stream buffer. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Now close public comment. I have a few more questions. I mean, I would say my thoughts on this case are similar to the, to the last case, but the fact is that I think for the applicant to accomplish this, this home, which in 2,800 square feet is not, does not appear to be abnormally large at all for the neighborhood, a reduction to 21-foot setback would further, I mean, I guess it would lessen the burden of the stream, is my thought. But it would, it would have to, this particular plan would need a variance that I do not believe could be handled administratively.
You're saying to change it to a side setback setting?
I'm saying if we were to do the same type situation and use a 21-foot front setback, I, I still think, you, you don't just have a portion of the deck in the stream buffer at that point. You've still got a small portion of the home that is in the stream buffer as well.
But a much smaller one.
But a, yes, agreeably, a much, a much smaller.
And we're at, at this point, able to grant a front yard setback?
No, we're not. It would require the applicant to withdraw his application and resubmit it under the new stream buffer ordinance and apply for a 21-foot front setback.
And I know it's a leap of faith on the applicant's part, really, my plan should approve that application. They came forward again with a 21-yard front setback.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's, that's kind of everybody's inclination, based on the comments that we've gotten.
In fact, if I could just make a comment, I think you want to quantify that with, based on the situations of that application, so you're not making any promises, you might not be able to keep it.
Right. I'd like to hear from the owner, 2,500, the last known, to how he'd feel about a front yard setback. I don't believe the property owner of 2,500 is here.
I'm here.
Oh, you are?
I just haven't spoken. I don't know, I mean, I'll state that, what's the question? How would I feel about a 21 front yard setback? How far setback is my home?
29.5.
And where is their application?
He says, Mr. Hunt, probably 21 without variance or whatever.
Yes.
It's not ideal. It'd be closer, just to be, to be significant.
I guess if you had to choose between a front setback and a stream buffer setback, which holds more weight to give us the adjacent landowner?
That's hard for me to say, because a portion of my home is also in the stream buffer currently.
Right.
What address are you?
I'm at 2,500 LJ Drive.
Should be Lot 10 on the survey that you have. Okay, thank you very much for coming up. So the way it sits right now, there's a 556.87 square foot intrusion into the buffer, if it were conditioned as is. And if the house were moved forward four or five feet, it's going to reduce the impact, but it's not going to.
We do have conditions for capturing runoff, infiltration, evaporation, transpiration plans, conditions. You'd be asking the applicant to withdraw that one to give them.
What's your calculation of the front yard setback on Lot 11, based on the 75-foot wall? Do you make that calculation?
I cannot provide a conclusive calculation for the fact that it would also include, just looking at an area quickly, it appears that Lot 9 may be have to be included in the calculation. I mean, there's, it appears that Lot 9 may be situated closer towards the road than Lot 10.
From this one, I could see.
Oh, yeah, and from, and from an area that I just completely figured out. But, um, does that mean that, you know, they're in the ballpark of that average setback that they represented at, really, so?
You could conceivably have Lot 9, 10, and 13 all in the calculation.
That is correct.
Well, if you have Lot 11 as well, you pick up both of them.
Motion to deny this application as far as the stream buffer intrusion.
Okay. Just a point of order, if we both deny it, when can the applicant reapply? Two years.
Twenty-four months.
So you're giving it more sense to give the applicant the chance to withdraw it, resubmit, with the change in buffer setback or approving?
I agree, I mean, I'd like to see, I wish we had the authority to create a compromise, you know, but because of the fact that a 21-foot front setback is not advertised, we do not, you know, variance was not requested on the front setback, so we do not have the power to grant that at this point in time.
The denying this request of, for a stream buffer variance would not prohibit him from a front yard setback request.
Yes, but it'd be virtually impossible to build a whole lot that would rip the front setback at about five feet.
Well, with a side setback.
I'd be, I don't know.
Trying to call a question, that's all.
Sure, that's fine, I understand. Do I hear a second? Motion was to deny Lot 11's variance.
Is there a way the neighbors could meet with the builder and maybe we could come to a compromise?
We can't, we can't take comment right now. Thank you very much.
That would require a control motion.
Right. All right, well, the motion did not receive a second, so we will go ahead and open it up to another motion.
I pay a 30-day deferral.
Okay. Keep in mind, a 30-day deferral is not going to solve the problem.
Solve the problem. The only thing that really solves the problem is either we withdraw the application or we approve it, regardless.
Because if it's, if it's deferred, he's still, he can't come back in 30 days and say, I wanted, I want a front setback. We can't, we can't add something to it for, I understand what you're, you're trying to do, it just doesn't. So, we either need to approve or the applicant would need to withdraw to make the, the neighbor's on the case.
I think we kind of call it back on the applicant.
Why is somebody afraid to make a motion?
Chairman, we saw the question.
Okay. Do I hear a second? The motion deferred. Motion does not carry. Back in discussion. Mr. Bulley, do you have a question you wanted to ask the applicant?
If you are willing to withdraw this, I think that will help you move this along faster than a deferral. A deferral just puts you back here in 30 days and we still can't approve front yard setback. You'd have to withdraw or reapply with a different request, and it sounds like you have some support from the neighbor to fill that. Well, I would disagree with that, because that would require starting the process over and requesting a front building line setback variance, but I believe the neighbor has indicated that she has significant reservations about having us build a home around 21 feet from the street, which would be eight feet in front of her current house, and it seems like she would likely be more amenable to allowing us to go for the stream buffer variance, so I don't think that withdrawing will necessarily get us to any solution where there's a, a viable plan on this lot. Mr. Nama pointed out that even with the, you would need a huge front building setback variance in order to make this lot viable, so I would think that, based on the hardship here, and based on the fact that significant every other home on the street is affected with the same problem and also sits in the stream buffer variance, that the board would consider a motion to approve the current application. But you can also get two variances, where a smaller stream buffer intrusion and a, and a front yard setback. You can ask for two variances, give you a draw and reply.
I've got another idea. Okay, we're in discussion. The, the house in Plan A, not counting the deck, is ma, mostly just the bay window is intruding into the stream buffer, 75-foot stream buffer.
Yes, sir.
From Mr. Cloud. We've heard some testimony that you might have a little better front yard setback than the B plan shows of 23 feet, is that right?
It shows 26.8 feet. 25.6 feet was the average building setback that we had calculated.
I think on the, the Plan A that Mr. Beersley is talking about, you're showing a 23-foot front setback with administrative variance.
That's correct.
What I'm trying to get at, Mr. Chairman, is that if we granted him a side yard setback according to Plan A, okay, great, grant him the side yard setback on Plan A, it's two variances, a side yard setback and a stream buffer. Grant him a side yard setback, he's able to move the house forward because he has more front yard setback than he thought, and then he doesn't need the stream buffer or just to do Plan B. So, an idea would be to give him the side yard setback, so he can have a little wider house, scoot it forward enough that he doesn't need a stream buffer. Deny a stream buffer, B, and grant him the side yard setback.
He'd still have to get a front setback variance. Because it wouldn't fit without variance.
I believe that we could administratively accomplish, if, if we were given a side setback variance, I agree with Mr. Beersley, that we could make a, make a house fit here administratively.
But you didn't ask me about the side yard.
Plus, you haven't taken account of Lot 9, bright exposure to the street.
It's much worse.
Sure, average is going to come up.
Sure.
Mr. Chairman, I mean, it would be difficult to determine at this time if it could be, the front yard setback could be reduced to administrative variance.
You'd be taking a risk there.
You know, and again, this is not administrative variance, that was reviewed previous to this request being made by staff. It was something else included by the applicant, so it's really hard for us to determine if that is correct or not.
So it's a risk variance?
Yes, because administrative variance is limited to 10% of whatever the setback may be, in this case, we're talking about an average setback, whatever the average setback is determined to be, 10% is the amount of reduction that they foresee administratively.
Okay, I make a motion to deny the stream buffer variance request and to accept the reduction in the side yard setback, seven and a half feet to four feet, and to accept, oh, the, the staff condition be development in accordance with Plan A instead of Plan B, include, given that we're close to the stream, I would keep in mitigation and runoff on the rooftops. I don't, I don't think we need condition number three, but I would leave in condition number one designated in Plan A and leave condition number two, no condition number three. Approve the side yard setback application, deny the stream buffer variance, and keep conditions, staff conditions one and two, using Plan A.
All right, so we have a motion on the floor for a denial of the stream buffer and approval of the side setback variance. Do I hear a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I don't hear any thoughts.
I, I guess, my only thoughts are denying a stream buffer variance, and you're going to make someone install a mitigation system that's designed that way to the stream buffer.
It's still, it's still near the stream, still the building, but...
I thought you said it's not.
It's further away than the other house on the street.
It's just runoff control, Tim, but it's not, it's not a mitigation plan, it's runoff.
All right, capture runoff and discharge infiltration. Any other discussion? All right, all those in favor of the motion conditioned as stated by Mr. Beersley, please signify by raising your hand and saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Pass to you, Ms.
All right, Mr. Beersley.
Hey there, welcome.
Welcome. All right, on item number three, ZBA 1420, which caliber bracket in LLC to eliminate the requirement for a single loading space to allow a curb cut on Peachtree Road, to allow an ATM as an accessory structure, and to vary from 27-728.115.78 and 27.728.15.12F3, and to allow this additional ground sign, which is 21.4260 Peachtree Road.
ZBA 1420 involves six variances that have been requested by the applicant. Quickly go over the requested variance to the loading space, section 27.755B2, to the access curb cut associated with the overlay district, 27.728.15.12D3, and also for, to incorporate an ATM as an accessory structure, which is a variance to 27.731D, architectural design requirements associated with the overlay district, 27.728.15.7A, also the development standards also related to the overlay district, 27.728.15.12.3, and also for a ground sign, which is variance towards the sign ordinance, 21.20C. Staff would stipulate to the report and quickly go with the staff recommendation. In regards to the variance to eliminate the loading space, sufficient variance number one, staff has recommended approval. Regarding variance number two, associated with the curb cut, staff has recommended approval on the condition that it be run in, run out, and only. For conditions three, four, five, six, associated with the ATM, staff has recommended denial. Staff would again stipulate to the report and to... Staff would again stipulate to the report and to the conditions as provided. There are three conditions listed in the report. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Stone. Yeah, please come forward.
Good evening, thank you for having us. I'm Trey Bell, representing the client, Caliber Brookhaven. What I just gave you was just a rendering of what the building's going to look like. I don't know if it was. I don't know if it was included in the package, but it was our intention to include it. Just to be brief, it's a lot of time for rebuttal. We're in agreement with staff comments for the first two variances of the ride-in, ride-out. We initially applied for full access and they went with approved a, recommended a ride-in, ride-out. We're in agreement with that. Spoken with DOT as well, and they didn't have any negative comments. The loading zone, we, we feel the parking better services this development and this type of tenant lineup with it being a financial institution, small retail, and a office up top. And then the last three variances, we really feel like a really encompassant of one issue is whether to allow an ATM or not. It was our hope that when we applied, made the application, that there would be some time to, or there would be an opportunity to, to say, this doesn't, you know, match the building, or, or what can we do to kind of start some compromise? And I guess that's what we're here for now. It's, just want to make a blatant statement that it's our first intention to deliver a product that everybody can get behind and appreciate, and something that's going to make that corner more aesthetically appeasing and functionally a, a great corner. So I'm just going to kind of leave it at that. Jake Bendick is here, he represents the bank tenant, and he's going to just talk briefly with you about the ATM.
Yeah, again, we submitted, or what was submitted, was the prototype. There was, basically as a jumping off point, we're always willing to work with the city and meet the architectural guidelines. We mocked up what you see here, we incorporated the stone and brick from the building. There would be no nineteen-foot tall sign. We would need some signage to denote it as a PNC bank ATM. There was also some concerns. I guess to address the, the first one is the accessory structure. I think we discussed that, the architectural design requirements, the development standards for building height, that, that would be, we would be looking for a variance on that, but I think it's tied to the initial request for an accessory structure. And also the ground sign, it seems that we're calling this an accessory structure, but then we're also calling it a ground sign. So I'd like some clarification on that. If it's classified as a building, then we'd be looking for a building sign, which would be allowed. There were also some concerns about pedestrian access. There would be an ATM incorporated into the facade of the building to promote pedestrian access along the road. In, in this day, the majority of traffic to a bank is vehicular, and it is to an ATM. By only allowing the, the ATM on the facade of the building, that poses a security concern. All the parking is in the rear of the building. After hours, someone would have to park at the rear of the building, walk around to the front of the building, and act, make their transaction, either deposit or withdrawal, and then walk back to their car. By allowing the drive-through, the customers can stay in the comfort of their car. There was also a concern that it would just, the, the drive-through would discourage pedestrian traffic, but I, I don't think that's the case. I think we're, we're putting the ATM at the front, that people walking to the site would be accessed, would access the ATM at the front of the building, and the majority of people driving to the site would be able to access the drive-through. There was a concern on traffic improvements, or traffic increase, and the existing site, well now it is a vacant, but there was a, a, a gas station there with full twenty-four hour access, and there, this ATM would have, it would, the traffic would not be any increase to the, to the gas station. I think that's, that's about all.
Okay. All right, thank you very much. What time does the applicant reserve?
Four twenty-two.
Okay, thank you very much. Do we have any cards for anyone that wants to speak in favor of the application?
We have two cards to indicate partial support.
All right.
The first being Shane Murphy.
All right.
But you mean, all right. My name is Shane Murphy. I live at thirteen oh three Kendrick Road, which is immediately adjacent to the existing gas station. I'm also a member of the Board for the Kona Association, which is Kendrick House Board neighborhood association. There are a couple of points when we say partial support. We are predominantly in agreement with the staff recommendations. We support two of the requests that came out, one which is the variance of the loading space, which is recommendation for one. Second is variance to access or curb cut. The reason that we're in support with that is there was a recent study that came out in regards to Kendrick Road. It was a traffic study that was put forth, which was basically stating that the traffic patterns that were on Kendrick were not typical of what you would expect based on the number of houses on the street. So it was overburdened traffic, country traffic. So the reason, the only reason that we would then support a curb cut off of Peachtree would because it would, it would lessen the traffic coming up down Kendrick for having a peaceful and walkable living area. I personally reached out to the owner of this property, George, four times. The first one was on May sixth, I spoke with George for about fifteen minutes. I told him that I was a member of the Kona Association. I personally worked with George in the past with regards to Fitzline. So I am familiar with George, we've exchanged business before in the past. I expressed to George that I was part of the Kona Association, that we are in large support of the change from the gas station to a banking center. However, that we wanted to reach out and collaborate with him as part of the association of what his development plans would be. He recommended that I follow up with an email to him, asking for contact information to the developer that would be handling everything, so we could start some collaboration and dialogue. I sent that follow-up email on May seventh, no response. On May thirteenth, I sent George a follow-up email, again reiterating and follow-up to our discussion. On May eighteenth, I sent a third email, so that's four contacts with George, asking for collaboration with the developers. I received no, no response from any of them to date. The one comment that one of the gentlemen just made was the gas station, the twenty-four hour gas station, that is not the case. It closed every evening, usually around ten o'clock. So to think that there wouldn't be some sort of change in the traffic patterns today would not be accurate. Additionally, when you think about putting an ATM for a vehicular ATM on the back of the property, you think about traffic that's going to come through there all hours of the night, right? So if I have two bedrooms on that side of the house today, so you think about cars coming through, the noise, stereos, transactions, things of that nature. Again, I would, I would, as well as other members of the Kona Association, like to collaborate with them. I think there are some viable opportunities versus having a drive-through ATM, but maybe having a secondary ATM on the back of the building, it would also partner with the front of the building. So again, encouraging walkable traffic versus vehicular. Thank you. Thank you very much.
All right, I'll get through. Thank you.
Next speaker is partial support, David Bars.
Hello, my name is David Bars. I live two doors down from the Shell Station at twelve ninety-nine Kendrick Road. I've been clear with everything Shane Murphy just said. I would, I would also stress the issue about traffic and the curb cut. We feel like that that's a good idea in this situation. We would be, we would agree with the staff recommendation to disallow the accessory structure for the ATM. It would in fact place additional nighttime burden on the neighborhood as opposed to the Shell Station, because if you have an eight-to-drive-up ATM, there's likely going to be, especially on weekends, there's going to be people there at twelve, one o'clock in the morning, taking, making transactions, lights from that, possible predators because of that. We don't feel like that's a good idea. We don't think that's the thing that should be within ten feet of a residence. Thank you. Oh, and by the way, let me say that I'm extremely disappointed. I'm also a member of Kona. We've been trying to reach out to them and collaborate, extremely disappointed that we got zero cooperation after four attempts. Very disappointed. Thank you.
Do you have any cards?
All right. Any cards in opposition to the application?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Would you like to rebut any of your partial supports?
Thank you again. My name's David Rogers, Director of Caliber Capital. To rebut a couple of comments, the, the owner, George, is an out-of-town owner. He lives in California. We've obviously been in contact, we've been in not close contact, and certainly welcome the opportunity, now that it seems that lines of communication may be open to work to, to come to some sort of agreement and improve the plan actually for the, for the site here. One thing to point out, there is a significant buffer along the back property that we are adhering to. It's not a ten-foot buffer, I believe it's a thirty-foot buffer with all the required landscaping and everything that it proclaims. So we feel like that hasn't as much of an effect on the accessory structure as it may seem. Certainly wouldn't be in some of that yard, but in fact, it's adhering to the buffer. I'd like to point out, just, you know, I'm not an engineer, but I'd like to just take a step back and kind of look at the big picture here. We're taking a, a gas station, a closed, an now closed gas station that was, was put out of business by a competitor, and putting a, a structure that we feel worked hard and we hope you share that sentiment, and aligns with the, the overlay district and the purpose of the overlay district. We've worked within the point six, seven acres, which has certainly been difficult to put a two-story building, which obviously is required by the, by the overlay district, to park that two-story building and to put in place the necessary setbacks. And again, all, all within that point six, seven acres. So we feel like we've done about all we can do, although like we've come to do with this amended ATM plan, which, which takes out the, the prototype nineteen-foot, arguably less appeasing sign. We've matched that with the, with the bricks on the building. Again, doing what we can to, to align ourselves with this overlay district and encode it in. We feel that, we feel that this, this is hopefully the first of many parcels we could be developed along this stretch, and we look forward to being a catalyst and a model based on the, based on building structure for, for future development. So tonight, we're, we're asking for your approval, but we're certainly going to consider a deferral of any sort if, if we feel that that is the most appropriate avenue. I think all parties have to hear. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, that'll close public comment, and we'll open up the board for any questions. Okay, I have one. Based on the square footage of this building, what is the required number of parking spaces? With this being retail and office, I guess that's a mix. Is that correct?
It would be a mix in the sense that there is commercial and retail, but those are two distinct classifications within the overlay district. Commercial in general requires one per four hundred, while retail requires one in three hundred.
It says thirty. We should thirty.
I believe the site plan points out that we will, one or two spaces will be overparked.
I believe that, well, I was going to say, I believe the plan calls for thirty-three parking spaces.
Okay, so you, you believe you're in excess of that?
One, two.
All right. Greg, can you pull the site plan up on the monitor, please? Site plan, this page. There you go. And can you, can you blow that up a little bit? By chance? Okay, so I guess if we're going to call the side of the building that faces Kendrick Drive the north side, on the west side of the building, you've got nine parking spaces, and then directly west of that, you've got seven parking spaces up against the ATM. Okay. Why could you not put the drive-through up against the west side of the building? Move those nine parking spaces back beside the seven? You've got a hundred and, a little over a hundred and twenty-five feet of width from your dumpster pad to, to the edge of the lot there. You would only lose one parking space by moving that flow, you know, basically, basically
Yeah, I, I can see what you're talking about. I think.
Talking about coming in right here, putting your, your ATM against the back of the building, drive-through like here, you've got enough room from this point to this point to have the exact same number of parking spaces in these two. You just lose one spot, and then you don't have to have a standalone structure.
If you look at the traffic pattern, the, the traffic coming in, comes in on the right side of.
Where you're talking about. They'd actually have to cross over on coming traffic coming out of the property to come on this side of the building. It also creates some stacking concern. You could probably stack, if you got past that, you could stack one car, possibly two. And then, and I just want to point out too, that apparently there's a, along the property line, there's a car wash, and the buffer's not there, so we're actually adding the buffer. And, and we're willing to go above and beyond if we need to put six-foot tall shrubs for screening, to block headlights, whatever we need to do. Like I said, we're here to work with the community, work with you guys, ultimately to, to provide this development. And I, and I would certainly be glad to go back to the engineer and, and raise that question, can we, can we do that? I feel like we've looked at that option thoroughly, but I would give it another look, if that's, you know, if that's what.
So could you clarify with your new plan for the ATM you submitted, which of these variances do you not need anymore? You need, you would need three just to install a rally accessory structure. Are we saying that your proposal now includes all the architectural design requirements necessary that you don't need?
It includes the aesthetic requirements, it doesn't include the height. It would have to be twenty-eight feet tall.
That drawing you showed us.
This one right here. Can we, can we pull it back in?
Well, that, that was, that would be your variance number five.
What about variance four, architectural design requirements? They're, they're satisfying.
Well, Mike and staff have a copy of that, please? We, we've not reviewed this, seeing that, seeing that at the first tap as you have tonight.
Yes, we've, we've received the meeting minutes. We just tried to come up with a plan to...
So can you withdraw number four? That's my question. Can you draw, withdraw your answer request?
We can if the, if some staff will allow.
The staff's position is the same in that two-story buildings are required, so start with the variance request.
That's not four.
That's number five.
Four.
Four is...
I was trying to take them one at a time. Talking about the materials, the height is addressed in variance question five.
In regards to your question, in regards to variance number four, for staff to sort of give you a decision at this time, we would have to consult the design guidelines or sorts of overlay. Only as a simple matter of us just taking a look at this point and sort of providing an answer to you. On, to be on the safe side, if you whichever decision and whichever way the board decides to go, the, I would at this point call out and say that they would still need the variance to number four to be on the safer side of it. Again, because we haven't been able to do a full assessment of what's requested as if that's presented to us at this meeting.
And condition number four and five are really directly related to one another.
So why does this thing need to be 28 feet tall? Are you going to put semi trucks through it?
It doesn't, by our standards, by the Brookhaven or Peachtree overlay standards, it would have to be...
So how high would it have to be to make it less imposing on, on Mr. Mosley's house?
We have, we have the height up. You give the exact answer.
So what we're saying is they would need the variance to make it shorter than 28, which seems like reasonable for an accessory structure.
The overlay states two stories. I mean, essentially that's what they're requesting a variance from.
And are they withdrawing six, the 19-foot sign on top of the...
Yes, we are.
Okay, so that's out. Just trying to pare this down in a manageable piece. He, he gets about 10 foot tall to the top. No more questions, all right?
Yes, we are.
If we take, if we take it down a car wash that's within the 30-foot buffer, you'd be creating a 30-foot buffer. It might help if you could propose some specific additional conditions on a vegetated buffer because, I mean, they're right. You don't want, you don't want car lights coming through there all night. And, you know, the vegetated buffer does have a sound, sound attenuation component.
That's, that's something we would absolutely look at and consult with the neighbors. Just to speak to that, we weren't made aware that it reached out to George. I mean, it's definitely in our advantage to try to collaborate.
How long would a deferral take for you to come back to the conditions of the neighbors to be...
I think the next meeting. I mean, we could, we could do it quickly and hopefully get a resolution.
I moved it to defer for 30 days and ask you to have some meaningful meetings, you know, on reducing the, reducing the impact of the ATM, both on a architectural and height, you know, put some, you know, to say that we would get, we would be happy to, if we agreed the ATM is properly buffered, I think we could certainly agree it doesn't have to be two stories. That just doesn't make sense. You're eliminating the sign requirement. I'm quite certain you could design it architecturally where, you know, we could, all of us agree to some set of standards. So.
Mr. Chairman, if the board does defer for 30 days, that meeting would be June 18th. However, the staff would receive, would need to receive any updated plans or materials by June the 2nd.
Still think 30 days is enough?
No.
Do you second to the staff?
May I just one?
Yeah. That's less than two weeks to meet with the neighborhood.
I think, you know, if you find with us, I can, we could get architecture, I mean, a landscaping plan together or something like that, meet with them. I mean, we don't have tons of red tape at our company, so it's something we could jump to as quick as we needed to.
Maybe you can set your appointment up before you all meet with the neighbor.
Sure.
Oh, no.
I would, I would lean towards the 30-day due. In fact, we've already got one 60-day deferral.
Yeah, I think 30 days is doable.
Did we get a second?
A second.
Okay. All right, we've got a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All right, so the motion on the floor is for a 30-day deferral to June, the regular scheduled meeting on June 18th. Any revised material would need to be submitted to Community Development by June 2nd. All right. Any discussion? All those in favor of deferral, please signify. Raise your hands. Hang on.
Aye.
All those opposed, go back. All right, case is so deferred. Thank you for your cooperation. Somebody want to make a motion for a five-minute recess?
I mean, just five minutes.
There you go.
There you go.
All right.
If you'll favor, please signify. Raise your hands.
Aye.
All right. Reset for five minutes.
I'm glad the board made a first.
Should be good for me, but she also got an hour.
We're going to tell Lisa Devon, who loves talking about the policy.
Yes, I'm doing that.
Setbacks on the way.
We're going to sit back on the side, I might sit on the other side of the rock.
Which is just missing, I think. The only concern will be when your yard is green within this castle frame here.
It wasn't very successful.
Yeah, so bad.
They're saying, so they're saying, so that's not used, that's not going to be the word.
So the water line, you're right.
Um, I don't know what you're saying, I don't know.
So they're saying, so that's not used, that's not going to be the word.
Yes.
So the water line, you're right.
Um, I don't know what you're saying, I don't know.
We're aware of the number two, like. You want someone else with the water?
As a, as a seventy, they'll...
All right, let's now hear case CBA 14-21, David Bennett. An increase in lot coverage from 35% to 50% to build a swimming pool and associated pool deck at 1013 Higrow.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. CBA 1421 is requesting increased lot coverage from 35% to 50%. Currently as a sign, the site currently stands at 39% lot coverage. Staff felt that the request was hardships art upon by the owner and it created a mere inconvenience. And therefore, staff has recommended null of the request. However, if the board does to move, to move, to vote in favor of the request, staff has recommended two conditions for your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your summary. Now, please go forward.
Hello. So David Bennett, I represent the homeowners at the property. The property is zoned, R75, and it's about almost 1,000 feet smaller than the typical R75 zoning, has a 49-foot front street versus a 75-foot front street, and about 1,000 feet smaller than the 10,000 square feet that's allowed. If you look at the property, the R75 runs along the street for the properties that run adjacent to it, but the property located directly behind it is a RA5, which is a 50% allowance on the impervious. And the property located to the, to the side of it is a development of commercial condos, which is a higher impervious calculation as well. So most of the, the two surrounding properties around it are greater than the 35%. Also, in our plan, we have for the remediation of the water that will be created from the extra paved surfaces, as well as we're considering all the trees of the lot. So we're impacting no more than 17% on the tree, on the trees existing. And then lastly, we want you to consider that last month, there was one R75 lot that had an increase of 53.8% for, for a full construction. And that was, again, the last one.
Thank you very much. How much time is that reserved for a vote?
Seven minutes 55 seconds.
All right. Do we have any speaker currents in this case?
We have three.
All right.
First, and it's four. First is Brad Willis.
Yeah, I'm the homeowner of 13, 1013 for this project. Again, just to reiterate what David has said, in the sense of the precedent that's set by the properties in the area, I don't think, you know, I would ask that you take into consideration the precedent of the increases on, do what's considered in the neighborhood. Secondly, it seems like looking at the comments from the staff on the issues with water, I did want to point out that we have, developer or the contractor has put in the opportunity to remediate any of that opportunity with that drainage area in the back of the property as well. So I think, again, we're looking at trying to work with the staff's recommendations to come to a solution that would allow us to...
Thank you very much.
Jeff Chiodoni?
I'm also a co-owner of 1013 Higrow Avenue, and I support what Brad and David have mentioned. And those remediations were full cooperation with the staff.
Thank you.
Just read her comments.
Just read our comments. I support this application because I am the adjoining neighbor.
All right.
I want comments.
No more comments. No opposition.
So how about the second?
No opposition. No opposition.
We open the question.
We're through the public comment. I assume the applicant does not want to rebut the support. Okay.
I think there is no.
We did, there were no, there's no speaker currents for opposition. So we've closed the public comment. Now we're in the questions room. I've got one question for the applicant. Is there, is there any opportunity with the vast amount of pool deck there to do any of that, an impervious solution? Or impervious solution that could maybe eliminate the percentage request?
I guess that would be what you consider impervious. If we, you know, if this...
That's what that guy considered.
Which is quite a good bit, quite a, more, more, more than normal off of your property. Is that, is that acceptable when they don't control this fence? How do you get there? How does, how does this plan satisfy the city fencing?
Well, it complicates the matter in the fact that it's not on their property. Um, that's the one issue. Uh, although city, definitely the city would have a preference on the fence in itself that's located on the property and that, uh, if the adjacent property owner felt the need to remove it, they do have the possibility of doing that. Um, so I guess essentially to answer your question, uh, the preference of the city would be that the fence is located on the property itself.
But you had not planned on any new fence?
We had, we had not, but that's not the city, you know, who would do that?
Are you kind of treating this area within the fence as your backyard? You know a lot of this.
It's not mine, it's the client's, but, uh, yes, it's a borrowed backyard space. But in the, in the drains that we have proposed, we were capturing the water from the pool, from the pool terrace that we were adding, plus the yard that we were disturbing, taking that water into a detention area. So none of the water was going into that space.
I think with the addition of the detention area and the lack of opposition, I'm inclined to be this application favorable. Even though the staff recommended no?
We also want to make sure we put on the record that at the time the property, the pool's inspected by the chief building official and his inspections team, they will, they will make sure it meets life safety code. So if the fence does not meet requirements, the CO will not be issued.
Is this the one that we received with five other questions?
Yeah, one email and five other questions. Um, yes, I did ask if there was a way to reduce the impervious. Um, it sounds like there is, but they've also captured a lot of that, they're also preparing to capture a lot of that water in a detention area, um, to eliminate some of the effects of the runoff.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, if staff, if the board is contemplating, uh, possibly moving on to vote on this case, again, I just want to reiterate, there are two conditions that have, staff has recommended, uh, and that is the same condition number two with you with, uh, capturing of stormwater runoff.
Right. Still doesn't seem like a hardship. I just can't get to the hardship, but other than the lot is smaller, there's some hardship maybe for the lot being smaller than other R seventy-five lots, but thirty-five percent to fifty percent is uncomfortable with that. Okay. Well, if you... Looks like you're adding a thousand and eighty square feet of impervious surface roughly?
Uh, yes.
And about five hundred and fifty-two of that, from my calculations, are the pool.
Right.
Um, so that leaves you about five hundred and twenty-eight square feet of pool deck.
Which is small for a pool deck. I mean, we try to reduce it as much as possible to allow access around it.
Um, but if you could take that five hundred and twenty-eight square feet and do it in a pervious type solution, uh, out of pavers, that would reduce the needed variance down to about forty-four, forty-three percent, call it forty-four and a half percent.
Yeah, if they don't include that, yeah.
I mean, if you were to do a pervious solution such as, you know, spaced pavers under gravel base, um, that would, that would drop it down by five and a half percent. Ms. Cannon, are you saying we don't need to put any fence conditions in here?
It's required by code, so you don't need to put the condition in.
So what number are you comfortable with, Mr. Pearson? Or are you not comfortable with that? Well, if you're going to grant it, it ought to be as minimal as possible, sort of something like forty-five percent. Um, okay. There's no opposition.
Yeah. Mr. Bennett, is that something you guys can do? Is that, is that an acceptable compromise?
Well.
From your perspective, tell, tell us.
I think the compromise would be for us if we use pavers because that would get us down to, uh, it would also allow the water to, to penetrate the ground while we also capture the water into a detention area. Um, as I said, the board also allowed last month a higher increase in that number for fifty-three point eight percent on the same zoning amount, so.
Sure, I, I know it seems as if we're setting a precedent that every case we take into consideration based on the parameters of that situation. So there's no precedent that's being set with anything that we pre-agreed.
But the pavers, I think the pavers would reduce that as well, I mean, I can't change the pool, it's not going to reduce the pool, but it would have reduced the pavers around the, the terrace area, anyway.
Is that something that, that you guys are open to and willing, I mean, would that?
If they consider the pavers not in that calculation, that's easy to do.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure somebody was, was going to be happy with the compromise.
I think if they consider pavers as not being part of that calculation, I think that works easily with the board. Yes.
Yeah, I, I, I kind of lean toward Chairman Nemus' attitude that I've seen other, you have, uh, grant, but like, like, uh, Miss Lawson said, it's not a precedent. But if you're, if you're okay with paper, then that could be a good compromise.
We can make a couple of motions with pavers.
I can't make a motion. At least three of you.
I'll, I'll make a motion.
All right.
That, um, we approve this request of the, um, pool deck, what, what portion of the pool deck of?
Forty-four.
Forty?
I think you, I think what you're looking for is a lot numbers for thirty-five percent to forty-four point five percent.
Yes, that's right, uh, to be accomplished through impervious, impervious pavers and, um, in conjunction with number two, construction of the, uh, discharge and filtration, evaporation and filtration.
Both staff's意见.
Yeah, okay.
All right, so the motion on the floor is for the approval of the amended, uh, increase in lot coverage from thirty-five percent to forty-four point five percent, uh, including the two, uh, recommendations in this staff. Go here a second.
With pervious factors.
With pervious factors. Well, but I believe that it was, uh, there's only granting forty-four point five percent, which would only accomplish the pool itself, so they would have to find a pervious solution to create the pool. Go here a second.
Second.
All right, the motion is second. Any discussion? All those in favor of the variance is stated, please signify or raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Right. CBA fourteen twenty-two, Vance Dover, reduce the accessory structure setback from ten feet to seven point five feet and increase lot coverage from thirty-five percent to forty-seven point three percent to build a swimming pool associated pool deck eleven seventy-five Pine Grove Avenue.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, as mentioned, there are two variance requests for the subject property. Uh, one is to increase the lot coverage from thirty-five percent to forty-seven percent, forty-seven point three percent. And the other is to reduce the setback for an accessory structure in the case of the pool from ten feet to seven and a half feet. Excuse me. Uh, although staff would not have an issue with the reduction of the setback, um, as it is related to the swimming pool, again, in this case, we felt that it was a hardship brought upon by the owner based upon a decision for, uh, to incorporate a pool on the subject property. Um, and again, it was not, it's not related to any, um, legal hardship, but it's a mere inconvenience associated to, uh, the proposed, uh, pool. Uh, therefore, staff has recommended denial of the request, of both requests, uh, as presented before you. Like in this case as well, if the board should move to vote in favor of this request, there are two conditions that staff has recommended for your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The applicant, please go forward.
Hello. Uh, my name is Vance Dover, I'm the owner of George's classic pool and I'm representing the, uh, the homeowner who's also going to, going to present. I don't have a lot of additional information other than what was, you know, provided in the, in the application and all the supporting documents, but I wanted to bring you a couple of points to it. Uh, as far as the setback, the house setback is actually seven point five, so we're really just wanting to echo what the house is. The pool setback is set at ten, we just like to line the pool up with it in the same as the house. Um, the, um, and, and the pavers themselves, we, we actually are proposing, you know, pavers, we could be open to a pervious paper that was, that was discussed in, in the last presentation. Also, we, staff recommended that we capture one point two inches of runoff and that's definitely doable. There's a, there's, there are some drainage issues in the backyard now just because of some elevation, but we're going to be able to make some changes with the property. But I'm going to let the homeowner speak to it because he has a more personal, uh, experience with that. Um, that's all of that.
Thank you very much. Steve? Are included under the speaker cards for?
Yes.
In favor? Okay. So let's go ahead and move to, is anyone in favor of the application?
Actually, the owner would be the applicant.
Okay. All right, so, please go forward.
Okay, um, first I'd like to say we bought this house in two thousand and eight, it had a very large backyard and we bought it with the express intent of building a pool. Our neighbor directly to the right, their entire backyard is a pool. They pretty much have the same house, much smaller lot. Two houses over also has a pool, quite smaller lot than ours. Across the street at that corner, they built a pool last year. Again, smaller lot, greater coverage, so our expectation, I think, is very reasonable. I think it is a hardship given that all the houses surrounding us have smaller lots and greater coverage. Um, neighbors on both sides of us are in favor of the pool and are both here to support us and we've been here all night. The drainage issue, we agree, is a problem. The builder did a miserable job on the drainage and, um, you know, part of building the pool, um, is fixing that. We waited till we were ready to build the pool until our daughter was old enough and, um, presently, um, it's still in its butt. Um, we have a huge drainage basin in the back, um, left corner of our property. No water goes in it because the builder built it, why would we have to go uphill? So we have a huge drainage problem on, on this back right side of our property and both neighbors have huge problems because we all slope from front to back. So our proposal in building the pool is, um, our builder is also, you know, landscaper for seventeen years and, you know, part of our solution is to solve this drainage problem. It's been for, for both of our neighbors as well as us, so we don't think there's going to be, you know, a big problem at all. It's going to be a huge improvement for all of us.
I'm Kim Neri, I'm the homeowner also, and, um, I just want to reiterate that we're going to be using pavers. We already put that into the plan and, um, that we do have this large basin in the back of our property that we can address your concerns, the board's concerns, uh, the inch and a half water that needs to be collected. Um, that can be very easily put into this, um, big pipe at the back of our yard. So, you know, hopefully that'll be a problem.
Impervious or impervious, but we're happy to switch the pavers to the ones that help the drainage. And that is not included in the, the present calculation.
It is not.
Not. Not the one.
All right. Thank you very much. All right. Does anyone speak in favor of the application?
We have six speaker cards, two of which are comments that they would like to record.
Okay.
The first is William Eason, this is my neighbor. He states, "We fully support approval of this variance. There is no adjacent property that would be affected by runoff." And the seven and a half foot setback is consistent with the zoning conditions and assumptions when the house was built and purchased. Uh, on our non-performing fifty-foot wide lots, ten-foot side setback is almost by definition imposing hardship upon the property owners." Uh, the second one to be read into the record is from Robin Mizel, and the statement is that Robin is a neighbor. "We are in full support of the construction of the, of the Neri's swimming pool and deck at eleven seventy-five Pine Grove Avenue." The remaining cards who wish to speak are Vance, what happens to them, or that's the builder, Martin.
That was me.
Oh, I think, uh, Mr. Eason, is he still present?
Yes.
He is.
Okay, he submitted, "I did not wish to speak, but then I did wish to speak."
Mr. Eason, do you wish to speak?
Just briefly.
Okay. You have three minutes.
I have to leave for a minute, I want to charge you back some. I'm the, um, William Eason, eleven seventy-seven Pine Grove Avenue. If you're facing the house from the street, I'm the neighbor immediately to the left. Um, I've been there for twenty years this month and since before many of these other houses were built. The Neri's are kind of at the bottom of where everything slopes from, from both sides and the existing drainage issues that Mr. Mr. Neri referred to are really more of a erosion drainage issue. presently, it's still, but we have a huge drainage basin in the back left corner of our property. No water goes in it because builder built it, why would we have to go uphill? So we have a huge drainage problem on this back right side of our property, and both neighbors have huge problems because we all slope from front to back. So our proposal in building the pool is, our builder is also, you know, landscaper for seventeen years, and, you know, part of our solution is to solve this drainage problem. It's been for, for both of our neighbors as well as us, so we don't think there's gonna be, you know, a big problem at all. It's gonna be a huge improvement for all three of us.
I'm Kim Neri, I'm the homeowner also, and I just want to reiterate that we're gonna be using papers, we already put that into the plan, and that we do have this large basin in the back of our property that we can address the concerns, the board's concerns, the inch and a half water that needs to be collected. That can be very easily put into this big pipe at the back of our yard. Don't see that that'll be a problem.
I'm not pervious or impervious, but happy to switch the papers to the ones that help the drainage, and that is not included in the, the present calculation. Not. Not the one.
Alright, thank you very much. Does anyone speak in favor of the application?
We have six speaker cards, two of which are comments that they would like for entry to record.
Okay.
The first is William Eason, this is my neighbor. He states, "We fully support approval of this variance, there is no adjacent property that would be affected by our runoff, and the seven and a half foot setback is consistent with the zoning conditions and assumptions when the house was built and purchased. On our non-performing fifty-foot wide lots, ten-foot side setback is almost by definition imposing hardship upon the property owners." The second one to be read into the record is from Robin Mizel, and the statement is that Robin is a neighbor. "We are in full support of the construction of the Neri's swimming pools and deck at eleven seventy-five Pine Grove Avenue." The remaining cards who wish to speak are Vance, what happens to them, or that's the builder, Martin.
That was me.
Oh, I think Mr. Eason, is he still present?
Yes.
He is.
Okay, he submitted, "I did not wish to speak, but then I do wish to speak."
Mr. Eason, do you wish to speak?
Just briefly.
Okay. You have three minutes.
I'd leave for a minute, I would charge you back. I'm the, William Eason, eleven seventy-seven Pine Grove Avenue. If you're facing the house from the street, I mean, they were immediately to the left. I've been there for twenty years this month, and since before many of these other houses were built. The Neri's are kind of at the bottom of where everything slopes from, from both sides, and the existing drainage issues that Mr. Neri referred to are really more of a erosion drainage issue. We get so much runoff coming off of Matthew Street that comes across the corner lot, comes across our lot, ends up in a manhole that DeKalb County put in during some rework that they did at our request, but they kind of messed it up and then further messed it up when they repaved roads and shortened the curb height too much. So, I know the Neri's are, are interested in solving as much of this as they can, regaining access across our lot to, to have the pool built, so obviously, we're fully in favor of it. Also, with regard to whether it's a hardship to, a homeowner imposed hardship to request the seven and a half foot setback, when the house was built, when the Neri's bought it, this was DeKalb County, and the setback was seven and a half percent, seven and a half feet, rather. And so personally, I wouldn't view it as an owner caused hardship to want to go from ten feet back to seven and a half, seven and a half feet. In my opinion, that's more of a hardship that was imposed by the city of Brookhaven changing our setbacks to ten feet after we already had purchased properties with their set of rules.
That's helpful. Thank you. Any other speaker cards?
I'm not.
Any rebuttal? Alright, then we'll go ahead and close the public comment and open it up to the board for any questions. How would forty-four point five fail on this one? It would actually take the required lot coverage from forty-seven point three percent to forty percent if papers were drawn according to my calculation. How do you feel about that? Does that seem fairly accurate to you?
That's the number I can give.
Okay.
What's the number?
Forty percent. I think they're already even.
Thirty-nine point six.
So you're okay with forty?
Trying to give you a.
I'm okay with forty.
Okay. I, I think if, you know, if we were to change this to forty percent and condition it on the staff recommendations in light of viewing favorably, I would not. Have any issues? Question?
I'm inclined to agree with that.
Alright, I'll make a motion to approve the ZB A fourteen twenty-two, reduce the accessory structure setback from ten feet to seven and a half feet, increase the lot coverage ratio from thirty-five feet to forty percent, not forty-seven point three request to build a swimming pool associated pool deck including pervious paper and adopting staff conditions one and two as stated. Alright, we have a motion on the floor for conditional approval, go here a second. Alright, any discussion? We have a motion in a second for the approval as stated in ZB A fourteen twenty-two, please signify, raise your hands and aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Alright, ZB A fourteen dash twenty-three, Adam Williamson, reduce average front yard setback from fifty-five point one feet, from fifty-five point one feet to forty feet, and reduce side yard setback from seven and a half feet to five feet to build a single family home with twenty-four eighty-one Bustanala Drive.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Staff has reviewed the request and have made the following recommendation. Staff has recommended the board vote in favor of the variance request to reduce the average front yard setback from fifty-five point one feet to forty feet. Typically, voted to deny the variance request to reduce the side yard setback from seven and a half feet to five feet. Based on the information provided by the site plan, it would appear that there is ample space in which the applicant has the ability to shift the home a little bit further, I believe, south to accommodate for a wider home without encroaching into the side yard setback. And again, staff will stipulate to the report and the condition as provided, there's only one condition provided, which is referring to that it be developed in accordance with the site plan submitted March seventeenth, thousand fourteen.
Thank you, Justin. Alright, thank you very much. Could the applicant please go forward?
Thanks for hearing my case, I'm Adam Williamson. This lot is a non-performing lot, it's in R seventy-five, it's fifty feet wide, so we have some neighbors there, and also, we have toke that falls off from the street down to a twenty-four inch drainage pipe that's in the back that we're trying to not get close to, you can see with the diagram. And the other, I think what we're trying to do is create a front porch on the front and not front load the house with the garage, so we're trying to bring the side, the driveway down the side of the house, and so it gets really tight there. Trying to get the side of the driveway down, down by the side and not get too close to the house, this is a house that we're in custom design so we can make, make changes, but I'll credit everybody.
Alright. Any speaker cards in favor of the application?
We have one speaker card that is both favor and opposition. It's Michael Griffin.
Should we give him twenty minutes?
No.
Alright, please go forward.
Yeah, I'm Michael Griffin, I live next door at twenty-four eighty-seven Bustanala, and I have no issue with the setback from the street, but the side setback, I've just now seen the plan, and basically, it'll push this house directly over right next to our house. So, basically, the, most of the houses on Bustanala have this seven and a half foot setback, so I just think that from a precedent standpoint, it'll be, it'll look a lot different than that house on.
Alright, thank you very much. Need more cards on this? Mr. Williamson, if you'd like to rebut any of the comments, lose your time reserve.
Yes, I would be willing to drop it back to seven and a half feet and get the front setback and move forward.
Okay. Thank you, thank you very much. Alright, we're gonna go ahead and close the public comment and open it up to the board for any questions. I think this is pretty straightforward, it's like the other agreement. Make a motion to pass the staff recommendations for front yard setback and denying the side yard setbacks. Alright, we have a motion in a second for the variances stated, any discussion?
The motion is exactly what the staff recommends.
All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand and saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes to the amputee. Alright, ZB A fourteen dash twenty-four, Michael Fields, reduce the front yard setback along Sunland Drive from thirty feet to ninety point five feet, reduce the side yard setback from seven and a half feet to four feet, and increase lot coverage from thirty-five percent to forty-three percent at twenty-five ninety-nine Apple Valley Road.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Three variances have been requested by the applicant. Staff recommends that the board, that the board vote in favor of the reduction of the front yard setback along Sunland Drive from thirty feet to nine and a half feet, and to reduce the interior side yard setback from seven and a half feet to four feet. However, the staff has recommended the board vote to deny the increase of lot coverage as requested from thirty-five percent to forty-three percent, but substitute in lieu thereof, recommendation of thirty-seven percent, which was a similar recommendation that was approved for lot two when this initial parcel plan came in, I believe a couple months ago, which in, in that request, they did ask for a waiver to the law merger, which that was granted. So based upon that similar rationale, again, I would reiterate that staff has recommended that the lot coverage be only increased to thirty-seven percent. And also, as staff stipulates to the report, there have been few conditions that have been recommended for your consideration as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Stone. The applicant, please go forward.
Good evening, my name's Michael Field, I'm the applicant, and I met y'all in March, as it was, and at that time, y'all had several questions that you wanted to see answered that were not selected in the site plan, I saw it at that time. I believe I answered those questions, one, in regards to children's, everything city, as well as new creative education or helping friends. The other was the idea of sliding the home over closer to the lot two boundary line, which is typically a seven and a half foot setback, and that's one of the three requested variances tonight, is that we reduce the setback from seven and a half to four and a half feet, and that is in terms of, that question was answered when I had an opportunity to discuss with Chief Williams, if that would be something that I would be able to impugn it on the lot, and he informed that it would be. So that was one thing that we were able to accomplish here by sliding it over, which we increased the distance from the curb. The setback, of course, is shown there as nine and a half feet, and that actually is seven and a half feet from the street. I would ask that y'all, I have had an opportunity to, you know, review the staff recommendations and understand that the lot coverage reduction to thirty-seven percent is fine, that's moving it over positively would be a little bit longer, but I think that can still work according to my calculations, thirty-seven percent of staff recommendation would be appropriate, as well as I believe they may have had a condition of water quality address on it as well, and that certainly can be done. So, I guess given staff recommendations, like, you know, again, in light of, you know, changes that we try to do here to improve what is a very, you know, is a narrow corner lot, there's no getting around what it is, and, you know, my request, I think, meets the criteria that y'all have the authority, you know, to approve, in the sense that it's, you know, basically, can't do anything with it unless, you know, the variance of the front setback off Sunland is achieved. Unfortunately, this is not a case that y'all are gonna hear that is all merry and rosy and there's no opposition. There was opportunity to hear from some tonight, I'm sure, better residents on Sunland, you'll hear from some that are on Apple Valley, and, you know, there was not a, a happy place, I guess you could say. What I'd like to comment on is the fact that it, it being a corner lot originally platted that way facing Apple Valley Road, there was no, there's no getting around, you know, what it is. So, I mean, again, I just ask that y'all allow me the opportunity to build light homes, you know, which is what is facing Apple Valley, all the way down the road. I know y'all have opportunities to make site visits, and you've seen Apple Valley, and you've seen the surrounding area. And I think there's, this would be a rendering of something similar to what we would be doing, which is congruent with the homes along the street there on Apple Valley, y'all remember seeing.
You want to put that down on the table so everybody can see it?
Alright. And.
Turn it around, set it up on the table for us. A little bit of turn. Okay, down. There you go.
Alright, I'll leave it there, you have room anytime now.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Alright, do we have any speaker cards in favor of that question?
We do, we have Stephen Pardoletto.
Okay.
Good evening, all. My name is Steve Pardoletto, I live at twenty-six oh nine Apple Valley Road, so I'm the lot adjacent to Michael's property that you just purchased. Been a resident of Brookhaven since nineteen ninety-nine, used to live on Pine Grove Avenue, and bought this current house on, I think, December first, two thousand six, so coming up almost another decade. I was one of the first purchasers of Spec House on Apple Valley. Apple Valley was certainly a very industrial, kind of distressed street, Mexican consulate's across the street from us, kind of a lot of dilapidated homes on the Marta rail track, but the vision was always to create essentially a street of eight beautiful craftsman style homes from Sunland all the way to Oaklawn. And we had five built at the time from a particular builder, and then, of course, two thousand eight financial crisis hit, all that stopped. So now, I think, we're all kind of excited in our street, at least the, I guess, five original purchasers of, you know, this kind of, this kind of new craftsman style home. We're really excited that Michael's gonna come in and continue that and have what we think is gonna be, in total, eight homes facing Apple Valley Road. He's conveyed his ideas for landscaping, I think it's gonna be beautiful, we talked about hardscaping. The neighbors of Apple Valley, we're all committed, we said we want sidewalks, if we don't have funds from a city standpoint, we're all gonna pull in and put sidewalks together. We are, we feel very vested, my neighbors, on Apple Valley Road. We've helped neighbors who are economically disadvantaged build fences, privacy fences. Personally, I pay for landscaping at the old Mexican consulate because I have to stare at it, my wife, of course, from the house, has to look at it every day on her window. So I approve the variance, my wife does, and I think we're gonna hear some good support from people at Apple Valley Road, that we're confident in Michael, he's been a great neighbor so far, he's had the property for a year, keeps it well maintained, my dogs love it, they think they've got their own private little park, so they're gonna miss it when there's two homes there. Thank you for the time.
Thank you very much.
Ryan Pasling.
My name's Ryan Pasling, I'm a business owner on Apple Valley. I'm encouraged by this development because Apple Valley, I think, has been kind of abandoned for the last few years, consulate finally vacated, you still have some abandoned homes on the west side of Apple Valley. I encourage y'all to approve this, to actually just continue the growth and development. Encouraged by the neighbors saying that they want the sidewalks in because people still go down Apple Valley to hit Marta, so I think it's awesome that you have the neighbors already on Apple Valley who want to fund that, so the city will pay for it. So my recommendation is for y'all to approve this and let's continue the development, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Stuart Corvain.
Good evening, I'm Stuart Corvain, I've been a resident of Brookhaven since nineteen sixty-four, I'm also a business owner and on Apple Valley, and in support of the applicant in this case. Been driving up and down Apple Valley a long time and looking at a lot of the dilapidated houses, and familiar with this builder's work, he does a beautiful job, and he's been a contribution to the development of Brookhaven, and hope to be allowed to continue to help us develop and make a nice replacement. Thank you.
Congratulations, you're fifty years.
But a while.
Alright, any more?
We have another in favor that submitted a letter and asked for the letter be read into the record from Kim Yu.
Is this one of the ones that was sent to us?
No, it was just handed to us. But I'm gonna paraphrase it, because it's, Kim Yu is a resident along Apple Valley, two doors down, unable to attend the meeting, supports residential new construction growth along the street, and feels it's important to keep a uniform appearance of similar crackin' style homes, brings character to the city, is attractive to potential homeowners, and supports the variance request.
Thank you very much.
No more in favor? No more in favor?
Okay. And we did receive several emails in opposition that asked to be read into record, and those are part of the record. We did receive copies of those. So do we have any speaker cards for anyone speaking in opposition to that question?
We do have five, one of which has asked if their comments be read into record. Brian O'Connor.
Okay.
Strongly opposed to the request for the setback variance, as it does not meet criteria for this extreme variance. Will have a negative impact on homeowners on Sunland, and nobody is in hardship for the builder. I encourage the zoning board to review in detail the nine letters submitted by Sunland Drive residents, as this outlines some very compelling arguments that support denial of the setback reduction. Next speaker in opposition is Melanie Elliot.
I'm Melanie Elliot. I live on thirteen seventeen Sunland Drive. And I just want to start by reiterating a point that was made earlier this evening, my gentlemen, regarding the variance needing to meet all of the criteria and being approved only if they meet all of the criteria for setbacks. I'm going to start just quickly with, by trumping the nineteen sixty-four, I have a letter from Mr. Alan Whitehead, who was born on Sunland, and the house is there now in the nineteen twenties. And skipping to his reason for the opposition, he says there's currently a thirty-foot setback from the front yards that border Sunland. The owner is asking for a nine-and-a-half foot setback. It's unacceptable to myself and most of my neighbors. And goes on, but just wanted to enter Mr. Whitehead's comments for the record. So to set the stage here, what we're talking about is a corner lot. It was purchased at one lot, is one lot. It's on the corner of Sunland and Apple Valley. And everything that you've heard tonight about light homes has been totally about Apple Valley with no regard to Sunland. So if we look at the homes on Sunland Drive, there's approximately twenty homes, all of which face Sunland, with the exception of the corner lot on Caldwell and Sunland. And of those homes, the average setback is forty-seven feet. So we're talking a gross variance of almost eighty percent. We can do nine point five by the forty-six and a half. And if we're talking about the thirty-foot variance, that's a sixty-eight percent variance at nine and a half feet. So very gross variances. In addition, the average house on Sunland Drive is fourteen hundred and eighty square feet. So some other things here, we would contend that the owner and applicant were the same that created the situation by taking a single lot with a small home on it, a very large lot that was a merged lot, and now trying to go back to nineteen twelve parcels over a hundred years ago and create two thousand and fourteen-sized, three-story houses on smaller lots. So he's really created his own hardship in this case. This was a very large corner, a corner lot, could accommodate either one of these two. Do I have a time on it?
Yes, you have three minutes per person.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't see that counting down on this one. Okay.
Did she have my time?
No, what you're doing, I'll take a minute or any extra. So, let me quickly then show a few pictures here that Fields used to justify this. So the first of which is, this is the corner at twenty-six thirty-five Apple Valley, and Sunland, this, I'm using a lot of time from this gentleman, though. I'm sorry, the time, I didn't hear the three minutes before we started.
Is someone else allowed to give their time?
I'll do that. She's making all the same points I'm going to make.
Okay.
Go ahead. Who is that? Is it Stephen Lovett?
Stephen Lovett.
Okay. So the home that you're seeing right here, this is one of three that were used by Michael Fields to justify this. This house is on the corner of Apple Valley and Oaklawn. It is a twelve-hundred square foot house. It's nowhere near the thirty-five feet tall, or I haven't even seen the square footage for the Fields proposed house. And then I would also contend that Oaklawn is not anything that we want to replicate in terms of the aesthetics of that street or this corner lot as a replacement for our zoning code. So, looking at, so that's one of the three examples that were used. The next was on Caldwell and, this is Caldwell and East Osborne, kind of an infamous house here. But East Osborne, so East Osborne runs between Caldwell and Three Meadows. There are five homes, four are corner lots. There's only one home on this street. And my neighbor who jogs thought it was a paved trail and not a street. It's nine and a half feet across, as you can see in this picture. And that's being generous. This is in no way comparable to a corner lot of Sunland and Apple Valley. This street, East Osborne, is, you'll look at it as nowhere comparable to Sunland. So what it looks like he's trying to do here is take exceptions and replace our zoning code with these exceptions, and they're not consistent and they're not good examples. The third example is actually a house on Sunland that goes into a cul-de-sac. So that, that's in the letter, that's in the variance request. We don't feel that that is comparable. I am going to just quickly wrap up now and leave Stephen to rest of his little time. I'd ask that you please deny the variance. It does not meet all the requirements for the language. I can bring you over.
Thank you.
My name is Jan Phelps. I live at thirteen twenty Sunland. I want to show you, and I'm not sure how this works, where I put this.
You just place it on that table right there, you'll be able to see it.
All right. I'm concerned because the side of Mr. Fields' house is going to be coming down Sunland, and that's a variance that I want to talk about right now. We have measured every house on Sunland, and you can see from the average there, it's fifty-four feet back. That's average. Guys, we don't need nine and a half feet. That's a thirty-seven foot difference. It would affect our enjoyment of our homes. We have to, to get to our homes, we have to come down Apple Valley and make that turn onto Sunland. I personally do not want to see an orange and gold or whatever color house that was on the side, nine and a half feet from Sunland when I make that turn. We have the variances here for a reason. We have communities that enjoy having the homes setback. Please keep those. Don't throw those out. So the average setback is fifty-four feet. If you subtract the seven point five, it's still forty-six point five feet. So this would be an anomaly, having nine and a half. We're totally opposed to it. I personally have brought twelve letters in from neighbors on Sunland that have said, we don't want this. Other people have brought in other ones. I have not, like Melanie's, I didn't bring hers in. So I don't know what the total is, but you are changing, if you approve this, you will change the character drastically of our street. And we do not want the buildings coming out touching the curb like they do on Oaklawn. And the board mentioned that, and one of their responses, they said, oh, we are going by DeKalb County. Well, I measured from the curb to the house on that Oaklawn, Apple Valley house, and it's eight and a half feet from the curb touching the house. Please don't slice and dice our neighborhood. We want you guys here. We love Brookhaven. We love living here. We want the culture and the community in the field to remain. I know why the people got up and talked that face Apple Valley. The front of the proposed house is much nicer than the side is, and they don't want to look into a backyard. They don't want a house looking like the side looks driving down the street. They like the front. Gee, we do too. There's a thirty-foot setback requirement. We're asking that you keep it. We feel it's going to negatively impact our property values, and we know it's going to negatively impact our quality of life. There is no financial hardship.
Mr. Chairman, just to state, that opposition has one minute thirty seconds remaining.
Okay, how many more speaker cards do we have?
No more.
No more. Okay. So I do not have three minutes? I would, I would suggest that we give Mr. Spencer three minutes and extend the, for both of them, two minutes for them. Do we need three minutes, Mr. Spencer? Thank you.
My name is Tom Spencer. I live at twelve eighty-three Sunland Drive, directly across the street from the subject property. And my company, Spencer Properties Inc., and I own three properties in a row, twelve seventy-nine and twelve eighty-three and twelve eighty-seven Sunland Drive, all of which are directly across the street from the subject property. So we have more impact from whatever happens with this property than probably any other single property owner. But I, I enjoy living on Sunland Drive, and I, I think that it would be unfortunate if the atmosphere of Sunland Drive were to be negatively affected. I'm adamantly opposed to this variance application for the following reasons. I've asked Mr. Fields for an elevation showing the design of the side of the house that will face Sunland Drive, and we have not received any elevation that he would condition his application on. And given that no elevation has been provided as a condition of this variance, there could be no assurance that the house will have any architectural interest or appeal. The one drawing that is provided is not a condition of his application. Anyway, given that such a severe reduction of the setback is being requested, I urge the board to require that the entire structure, including all overhangs, cantilevers, gutters, chimneys, and bays, conform to the revised setbacks. The applicant has been uncooperative in showing us exactly what his intent is architecturally, which is leading me to believe that it's not as desirable elevation. Otherwise, he would have been led to an elevation and make it a condition of the application. The reduced setback is in direct conflict with the average front yards established on the Sunland, which has been established by other people's comments. Lastly, I'd like to comment that I would disagree with four of the conclusions of the staff, and urge the board to reject those conclusions. does go beyond the minimum necessary to afford relief.
Thank you very much, Mr. Spencer. Thank you. How much reserve time does the applicant have before the two minutes?
Including the two minutes that you mentioned, now he has a total of six minutes or five seconds.
Okay. Mr. Fields, if you'd like to have any rebuttal, it's the time you have remaining.
I would, thank you. I'd like to address some of the things that Tom Spencer just mentioned. First of all, about being uncooperative, because actually, until I disturb his comments, Tom and I had many discussions because his property is directly across the street, and I've had, both shared, you know, back and forth on our insights on what we would like to see. I've always reassured him that even with the renderings that I've brought today, which would be examples, I'm not required to submit them to staff. That's not one of their criteria. But I did show, you know, him, I tried to demonstrate what I was intending to do. And I've always been upfront with that, even this morning, you know, even gave him a list of homes I have built, should he want to go by and check out, call it a work, the architectural features, the mix of textures of, you know, stone, brick, shay shingle, you know, all that I try to use to give it some character. One thing that he didn't mention, which he, you know, has always conveyed to me and other residents on Sunland, as you know as well, is that his, his properties, he owns three properties, rents out two and occupies the other, is currently zoned RM seventy-five for multifamily homes. And he has indicated in a lesson earlier today, when I spoke with him at his residence, that within the next couple of years, he will be developing a property with, you know, townhomes or the light. And he actually asked me if I would be considering through email if I could change my address on that corner lot from twenty-five ninety-nine to a twenty-six number, a hundred number, so that he could keep a bank of twenty-five hundred numbers for his future properties. So, yeah, I find this somewhat interesting that he's, he's bringing this up, the fact that, you know, here I am, a homeowner looking across the street, when his intent now, I mean, it's always been to develop this property, you know, with high density. And if Sunland residents are looking for, you know, I don't know if y'all noticed, you know, when you did your site visit, but there is a reason, you know, the corner lots and all the lots, and why I'm talking about Apple Valley so much is because these are associated with Apple Valley, and behind them, the two homes immediately behind, and behind Mr. Spencer's property, once he, once his develops that face each other on Sunland Drive, is actually kind of the beginning of some, you know, in my opinion, if I was a resident on Sunland Drive, it would actually be the beginning of it. And that is where, in fact, all the homes become the room of setbacks. And I think that it looks correct, you know. I don't know that the immediate turn onto the street, the townhomes on one side, my single-family homes on the other side, which, just to rank a point that Jan had made about how close, when they were showing the house, you know, up on the other corner, yes, that's an extreme case. It literally is. I can stand at the curb and almost touch the house. My house is, you know, proposing is seventeen and a half feet off the street. And, you know, I think that y'all can see, by looking at the plan, there is no other footprint. I mean, sliding the house over in order to have, you know, the same, I guess, property rights as everyone else to be able to build some more, some more style home, that's why the variance request is in, you know, is being made. So, thank you very much.
All right. Thank you very much. All right, we'll go ahead and close the public comment portion, open it for the board for discussion. I'll be happy to start off. I went back and listened to the case when we did the lot waiver merger. I went back and listened, I believe it was about an hour and a half case. I went back to listen to that in full today. And we did grant the lot waiver to split the lots back out because, you know, it was not a fault of the applicant that those lots were merged by the DeKalb County Tax Assessor at some point in time. So we have two lots of record here, and we basically asked the applicant to withdraw his, his variance request on that corner lot at the time to try to appease the neighbors to some degree, because he had not requested a side setback variance on the north side of the property. We asked him, because we could not grant that because it wasn't requested, we asked him to go back and resubmit, reducing the side setback on the north of the property in order to get the house further off the in order to get the house further off of, off of Sunland. You know, I believe Mr. Beardsley made the comment in the case that, you know, the applicant's just going to have to put faith in us that we'll remember all this when he comes back around to resubmit. I understand all the comments that all of the public is saying and all of the residents on Sunland, but I think we're having an apples and oranges comparison here. You're comparing the front setback of homes on Sunland to the side setback, the true side setback of a home on Apple Valley. These are two lots that face Apple Valley Road, and the Sunland frontage is, for all intents and purposes, a side setback on it, just like on 1308 and 1302, Sunland have a massive side setback variance to Shakerest Road. You know, they're, they're almost on the line. So, I don't, I don't see how we can look at the setback requests unfavorably due to the fact that the applicant went back and did exactly what we asked them to do.
And not to mention that if you've got multifamily directly across the street, further evidence of your saying it's not apples and apples to go down Sunland and compare the same thing.
In regards to the lot coverage, I'm not inclined to grant their request there. I think the applicant can do a side entry garage and not require any variance whatsoever, but I don't disagree with going to 37% as recommended by staff.
What do you do or do you deny?
I think 43% would be excessive. I'm comfortable, I'm comfortable basically going with the staff recommendation on the lot coverage, and I would vote in favor of the front setback variance and the side setback variance that are requested, as requested.
Oh, 37 was the staff recommendation?
Well, there's one thing that we have been consistent on, is that we treat, we treat corner lots as not requiring two front setbacks, and to the people on Sunland, you know, it's, it is kind of compelling that, that the houses aren't oriented in the same direction, you've got the multifamily across the street, you've got an alley that kind of separates this house from, from the rest of Sunland. The applicant has pushed his house further back from Sunland, he's added a vegetated buffer, all, all of that on our, on our initiative, initiative, if you will. So I'm, I feel like the staff's done a good job, you know, the staff proposal, as Mr. Kamau points out, should be supported.
Any more comment, Don?
I know there was some concern by the residents of seeing the side of the house. Is there a proposal, is there a requirement to put some type of, maybe heavier vegetation along the Sunland corridor?
I think the applicant has proposed three trees along that location that were not on their initial application back in February. We've got a 26-inch hardwood on the corner, 24-inch hardwood right down from that, proposing three trees adjacent to the house, another one on the other side of the driveway, followed by a 28-inch hardwood that's there. I mean, I don't know how many more trees you can fit on the lot.
Yeah, yeah. I'm consorted to 37%, so I'll vote the other two against as a party.
Then I'll be having an entertaining motion.
You don't want me to do it, I guess, okay. As to item ZVA 14-24, I move that we accept the application as approved by the staff with the staff conditions for the reduction of the lot coverage from 35, I'm sorry, from 43 to 37, meaning an increase in lot coverage from 35 to 37% in the staff conditions.
All right, we have a motion and a second for approval of the conditioned variance discussion. All right, all those in favor of the motion is presented, please signify by raising your hand and saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed?
Aye.
Okay. And the motion passes forward. All right, moving on to item number eight, ZVA 14-25 Carrera Homes, an increase in lot coverage of 35% to 36.9% to build a swimming pool at 2727 North Thompson Avenue.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. ZVA 1425 is a request for, to increase lot coverage from 35% to 36.9%. The staff has reviewed the application as requested by, as requested. With prior knowledge of the fact that the applicant has had to go through multiple revisions of the site in order to be in compliance prior to this request with the 35% lot coverage, we felt that the incorporation of the swimming pool would be a hardship that it has been brought upon by the owner. And again, in this case, it would be a mere inconvenience, not necessarily a hardship that is associated with the criteria as listed. Therefore, staff has recommended denial of the application. In this particular request, we did not provide additional conditions for consideration by the board, but if you do move forward to approve it, please do consider to improve these conditions, essentially related to capturing a stormwater runoff of the property. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The applicant, please come forward.
My name is Stephen Longer, I'm the applicant on here, working builder on the particular property there. There were two issues that were raised in the city's reports. One was that the swimming pool structure was within, inside the 10-foot setback. That was a small part of the landscaping feature that was on the pool. We're happy to move that all outside of the 10-foot setback in relation to. We're 1.9% over the 35% permitted allowance for the, for the swimming pool. To try and address that, we're more than happy to put in rain barrels or some other water mitigation facility to make sure that we comply from an engineering standpoint with the 35%.
Okay. Do you have anything else? All right, we'll go ahead and reserve your time for any rebuttals if there's a deposition. Who did you see first?
None, a great one, one in opposition.
Okay.
And it is reading into the record.
All right.
From Dino Louie.
All right.
The comment is, previous variances, previous variances to the property have resulted in a need for the variance. The builder also has a history of disregard for zoning ordinance. I live two houses from the property and a house under the same ownership, but the same builder anticipated.
Okay. Did you want to have any rebuttal to that? I think you've got about nine minutes left.
We've spoken, the owner of the adjoining property, he's not in opposition to what we're proposing with the variance here. The person on the other side of the rental property, they live in, the owner lives in Turkey, we were not able to get in contact with them. I don't think we have asked for any other formal variances on this property, so.
Okay. All right, we'll go ahead and close public comment and open it up to the board for any questions. I've got some questions, if you wouldn't mind coming up front. What exactly is your role with the applicant?
I'm the builder.
You're the builder, okay. You said there weren't any other variances with the property, but you received a front setback variance that was administratively granted, is that correct?
That's correct, yes.
Okay. I'm troubled with your site plan. Number one, you show no pool deck around the pool. I know there's a note on here about all future pathways to be constructed of pervious material, but, you know, there's only so many pervious pavers you can put down, and so many solutions that you can put down. You're showing a wagon-wheeled driveway on here, that, you know, I've never seen a homeowner not fill one of those in within a year or two. You have a note on here about your minimum rear setback is 28 feet, and I'm not aware of any zoning district in the city of Brookhaven with a 28-foot rear setback. The other deficiencies I see is you're showing a single-story existing frame house next door to the left of this property with a measurement of 55.7 feet off the street. Is that the measurement that you used to obtain your administrative front setback variance?
Now, if I can go back a little bit, one of the comments you raised was the 28-foot rear setback. An accessory structure can be within that distance without a variance.
Accessory structure would be within 10 feet, right?
That's correct. And the, from our original plan that we had submitted, this subsequent plan has now changed it so that it is an accessory structure.
Okay, but that would still be a, there's still a minimum rear setback for the house at 40 feet, you know, there's just an incorrect note on the site plan.
No, 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 the garage is a detached garage, and it's considered an accessory structure, so it's not a part of the house.
Right, and that would be a 10-foot setback, wouldn't it?
Correct.
So why is the number 28 written on the site plan?
Because there's a 28-foot setback.
That's how far you have it setback.
That's correct.
Okay.
We could have moved the garage further back if we wanted to.
Okay. The main issue I have is I doubt the accuracy of your site plan. And the reason simply why is you're showing an existing single-story framed house to the left of this property at 55.7 feet off the street. There's not, there's a two-story home there that was CO'd well before the date of this house, the date of this site plan, because I built it, and the homeowner is sitting right there, and, you know, I know the house is at least 57 to 58 feet off the street instead of the 55. I'm more interested in seeing a, I guess personally, a deferral in this, so we can get an as-built to see exactly what's on the property. I'd like to see what's truly on the property, and I'd like to see the proposed pool deck and everything shown on the plan, so we can accurately deliberate this case.
The pool deck around the outside of it's planned on being grassed with coping around the generally existing plan. As you mentioned, there is not an existing single-story framed house next door. I would have to rely on my engineer and the survey that we used to clarify that measurement, but I'm happy to do that.
Okay, yeah, I mean, I just, I'd like to see an as-built that shows the exact locations of the houses next door and all the structures here constructed on the properties.
Would you like the calculation of the pervious surface at 36.9 is accurate, given all this detail on?
I don't, I don't have any idea.
Yeah, can I just see an engineer certified?
Well, I do actually have, this was certified by an engineer, if they're incorrect in their calculations, they're responsible for that.
Okay, well, I think we've shown that this is incorrect by virtue of the fact they're showing a single-story house next door.
The notation on that may be inaccurate, or it is inaccurate, but if I could possibly, if I can get clarification that these dimensions are accurate, we assume that we could get a decision based on that? If it's not accurate, then I'm happy to come back.
Well, I don't, I don't think we can make a conditional deferment. I think we have the ability to do that. Anybody else got any thoughts or questions? I would like to defer to you, I mean, if you built the house next door, it'd be better. Or are there just any questions in general about the project?
Well, I mean, I did make a site visit, and I was incredulous about the position that you guys are planning to put this swimming pool. I can't imagine that anyone's going, this is going to be a livable space. It's basically right outside the living area, and I can't imagine, how are you going to have a pool? In my opinion, it looks as if the water from the pool is going to run into the house.
If, if you take a look at the actual plan, there's a very large curved porch that comes off the side of the house, it doesn't go all the way through the pit.
I saw that.
But the dimensions of it has to be inside the 10-foot, I mean, it's clearly what has to happen. Without asking for any variance or whatever.
Sure, I'm inclined, based on my observation, I'm inclined to agree with Mr. Chairman, in that we'd like to see a more accurate survey or as-built.
And can get updated and as.
Sure, so I would just reiterate that I would be inclined to defer this case to see a more accurate plan.
Also, maybe a little larger scale. This is a very small-scale drawing, especially given the detail of the play here.
All right, well, entertaining motion, anybody wants to make one?
I'm going to defer this for 30 days.
Second. And that would be to the date certain June 18.
With plan submitted by June 2.
With plan submitted by June 2.
And, and I can't find it on here, but the, you know, the as-built with the pool, with the coping pervious surface calculation, I'd like to see it on here, certified by the engineer.
Definitely. I'll get it in a larger scale for you then.
So we have a motion and a second on the floor, any discussion? All right, all those in favor of the deferral of ZVA 14-25, please signify by raising your hand and saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Okay, so, thank you very much.
You said you got, I'm sorry.
Don. All right, ZVA 14-26 JW Homes LLC to allow curb cut on Peachtree Road for access to proposed townhome development, 3804 and 3770 Peachtree Road.
Chairman, if we could, who made that last motion?
I did.
You did?
And I'd also like to renew my notice of conflict that I made in the work session and recuse myself from this.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. ZVA 14-26, it's a variance to the Obley District, specifically 277281512D3, which is associated with a curb cut off of Peachtree Road. Staff has reviewed the request as submitted by the applicant, and has recommended that the board vote in favor with the following four conditions. The main condition that should, the board should be concerned with, again, it's condition number two, which is stated as the curb cut on Peachtree Road shall be limited to a ride-in, ride-out drive only, and the owner, developer must obtain a driveway permit from G-DOT. In addition to that, condition number three is associated with the curb cut, which states the owner, developer shall provide interparcial access to the adjacent tract to the west, which is, which is located in the city of Atlanta, to provide full access of the subject property or the subject development onto Club Drive for safer signalized access that's currently existing off of Club Drive. And again, staff will stipulate to report. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, I'm Carl Westmore, my address is 3343 Peachtree, and I'm representing John Whelan Homes, which is the applicant. Jeff Kingsfield, with Whelan is here if you have questions. I'll address Mr. Sarm's condition shortly, but I think you're all familiar with this property. It's 2.28 acres running Peachtree at the southern intersection of Peachtree and Bel Air. It's on RM75 under the, and subjecting to the Brookhaven-Peachtree Obley District, and it is from the Obley District requirement that we're requesting the variance to allow Peachtree access. The proposal is to develop this with 24 townhomes. I think it's helpful to look at the survey, I've got copies of this for you, it's not easily visible from the overhead. Get that on. That's the site plan, I think the as-built survey was helpful if we can get that on, if not.
Okay, we can turn it on.
All right.
Can you turn it, Carl?
I'll try.
The same way your site plan was. The same way your site plan would be in Jim.
All right. All right, oriented, then Peachtree's on the bottom, Club Drive is on the left end. Size, we're looking at Bel Air is on the right. The reason for three colors is the property is really divided into three parts. The pink section on the right, it's currently got a couple of apartment buildings on it. It's got one full access curb cut on Peachtree and one curb cut on Bel Air. The center portion, which is also in the city of Brookhaven, has Peachtree access only. It has no access to Bel Air. It never has had access to Bel Air. It's got one full service curb cut onto Peachtree. And the green portion is in the city of Atlanta. It is under R3. And I think it's important relative to one of the staff conditions, they suggested interparcial access, but in the city, you cannot access multifamily zone property through a single-family property. So unless and until that property will rezone, and there's no zoning application pending on it, there's no way to get access from Club Drive to the city of Brookhaven. There are two site plans. First is that referenced in the staff conditions, which shows access only on Peachtree, again, Peachtree being at the bottom of the, of the site. That is what the staff references in the condition. That is the plan that I think the neighbors will hear from in a minute or here support because it shows no access on the Bel Air. The next plan has also been reviewed by the city. It would be the result of the denial of this variance or the approval of this variance subject to only ride-in, ride-outs, ride-out access on Peachtree, and that is, of course, access only onto Bel Air. And I think that's, as you'll hear in a minute, clearly not the preference of the developer or servant of the neighbors. As you know, any access on Peachtree requires GDOT approval. As you may also know, there's a center turn lane here, which provides not only stacking, but some sort of acceleration, deceleration lane in this area. Bel Air does not have a signal, Club Drive, while it has a signal, as I've said earlier, there's no way to get there, absent a rezoning of that property in the city of Atlanta. We have applied for GDOT approval. I think it would be fine if you want to, if you were inclined to grant the variance allowing full service access on Peachtree, that this board condition it on GDOT approval, if that is helpful to you. Let me go back to the staff conditions briefly. First is that development will actually occur in accordance with the site plan. That's fine. We have no problem with that. Again, that's the first site plan that I showed you. Item two, the curb cut will be limited to ride-in, ride-out only. We must obtain a driveway permit from GDOT. Again, I think if you want to make a condition on getting the GDOT permit, that's fine. That's logical and has to happen anyway, but if it's ride-in, ride-out, from our standpoint, that's not going to work, and it's going to force us back into access only on Bel Air, which I think is counterproductive for the developer and for the neighbors. Third condition is that we provide interparcial access on the club. Reasons I've already outlined, that's not legally possible. And then four, that we submit a combination plan. That's, that's certainly fine. As you know, this problem has been problematic for the city since the city, state, and corporation. In fact, I think this board has probably dealt with it previously on a couple of occasions. We may now have a compromise supported by the immediate neighbors. You've got a letter from them in your package. You'll probably hear from a few of them in a minute. All that's required to effect the compromise is that you approve this variance allows full service access subject to a GDOT permit on Peachtree, and the site plan, as we have presented it, can be, can be developed. I reserve any other time for it.
Thank you very much. All right, do we have any speaker first?
We do. Rick Asbill.
Okay.
In favor?
All right.
Thank you very much. I'm Rick Asbill. I live in the townhomes called Bel, uh, Bel Air Community Association, which is essentially just to the right of the pink place at Peachtree and Bel Air. As most of you know, this has been going on for about a two-year process, and we've been urged by the city of Brookhaven leadership to try to work as neighbors with the developers to come up with something that would make sense and that we could live with. We did, we agree. It's probably unusual for you to sit here and see virtually everybody in the neighborhood, as well as the developer, all on the same side. The, looking at the, I'd like to show the same pictures that Carl just shared, just remember if you could shine a light on those again. Couple of things that, that would cause a concern. If we, if we can't do everything out on Peachtree, the blue property is problematic because it's 65% of the total city of Brookhaven property, and there is no Bel Air access. And so there's going to be a big fight as to whether or not it can be granted when it doesn't, doesn't already exist. More importantly, if you look at the, the third situation, if you, if you were to say you were going to not have Peachtree access and force everything, assuming it legally can be done, to come out on Bel Air, all that's going to happen is, is that the traffic will come out of the units, onto Bel Air, will turn right up to Peachtree, and 100 feet away from where it's, the requested drive is, it's going to have the same problem. It's going to have to turn left or right with no, no light either way. So the point we have is, why cause additional traffic and hassle for the neighbors from parking and other problems on Bel Air when folks coming to Peachtree out of Bel Air have the identical problem 100 feet away? We've got a solution that the neighbors, and many of them are here in support of it, that will work, which is this process here. We worked very hard with the developer to come up with something, and essentially, this eliminates the additional level of hassle for the neighborhood, but allows the development of the project as requested. And so we would be in support of that condition of the full access. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Walter Melling?
Yes. My name is Walter Melling. I live on Bel Air, adjacent to the back of the pink and blue, and have since 1971. We strongly support the access on Peachtree, full access. We also strongly support the effort that the ZBA has put in to getting this resolved. We started, I think, your very first meeting. We had over 200, my wife said 300, whatever the number is, residents. We did it again, meeting over in Corfords Square. This has been incredibly difficult and time-consuming for everybody. Today, those lots sit with vacant buildings. We've had repeated problems of vandals, vagrants. Our children, our grandchildren have been accosted across the fence. We need to get this resolved. It's not time to start again. This has been one of the most, I'm an attorney too, Bel Air Drive has 13 lawyers. We support this. It's very hard to get that kind of agreement. Everything isn't perfect. Ideally, the recommendations of the committee could work, but that would be years away to get the kind of access through the city of Atlanta if we could ever do it. We think we have a good solution for the neighbors, for the owners, and for the developer. It's not perfect for any of us, but we strongly support it. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
We have no further speaker cards. The staff have noted that the two exhibits that were placed on the overhead, we have not received.
Okay. Thank you very much. Did you have any?
Well, I understand, Graham.
Four minutes.
That's, that's more than enough. Actually, Ms. Cannon, with regard to the site plans, they were attached to the letter that you wrote to the developer, and Mr. Song was involved in it as well, so you...
They were not submitted as part of the application, Mr. Westmoreland?
Well, they weren't submitted as part of the application, but they are, I think, are relevant to the alternative that could be built and would be built if, if this variance were denied. And I think one of them actually must be because it's a site plan that's referenced in the condition, so I'm a little confused as to that, nevertheless. And the, the as-built survey that has the three colors on it is simply a depiction of what exists on the ground, and I think it's relevant, again, because it shows the delineation between the city of Atlanta and the Brookhaven property, which affects one of the staff writing decisions, which does not allow access out of the club, and also indicates the existing two full-service points of access on Peachtree as well as that on Bel Air. I'm glad that Mr. Melling emphasized the difficulty of getting agreement by noting that he had 13 lawyers involved. I think this has been a long case. My goodness, I've not been involved in all of it, but I think it is time to wrap it up. I think this is a, a reasonable solution for the city and for the neighbors. I would mention one other thing. There was some discussion, I think, on your first case tonight about having an alternative of signalized access, and whether that impacted your decision to allow access on Peachtree. Again, again, it's been stated and it's obvious, there is no signalized access as an alternative here. If you get out, and I think Mr. Asbill made the point, well, all you do is shift the problem slightly north if you put people out on the unsignalized access point at Bel Air. So for all the reasons that we have listed, for the reasons that the neighbors have mentioned, and I think primarily because this is finally, for the first time, a solution has been presented to a very difficult, long-running problem for the city, we've asked that you recommend approval, subject to the conditions that I mentioned, development on the site plan, submitting the combination plan, and the, obtaining the full service access on Peachtree subject to GDOT approval. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, we'll go ahead and close the public comment. I'll open it up to the board for discussion.
I'd like to start on this one, Mr. Chairman, if I may. I've been a resident of historic Brookhaven for nine years, served on the HBNA board for six. This, this site has been a, an issue that I've also been living with since before Brookhaven became the city, before I served on the governor's commission. So this is a phenomenally big improvement over anything we've seen before. I mean, just remember, four stories, I don't know how many hundreds of units was the last application. You know, this project, this Whelan-style townhome development attached piece simple homes or whatever they are, is exactly replicated down the street in Narromore. It has a full-access turnout on Peachtree, much closer to a busier intersection of Peachtree-Dunwoody. So this, this proposal is extremely low-density given this site. No driveway on Bel Air is what the neighborhood wants. So that, that, we have to go in that direction. They'd be closing two full, can we go back to that? Do we have that back up? Be closing two full-access curb cuts, one serving each, the pink and the blue parcel, in favor of one full-access curb cut. There is a center turn lane in the middle of Peachtree here. Peachtree's three lanes on each side with a full-access curb cut. So there's plenty of room for people to pause and make a left turn. It's better to balance out those people making a left turn, half of them on Bel Air, half of them coming out of this site. Again, the other thing, we want people making a left turn out of here. You know why? So they can shop and dine in Brookhaven, okay? We don't want them to have to go to Buckhead and turn right, do we? Let's make them, let's allow them to turn left and go shop and dine in our city. So for those reasons, I'm very strongly in favor of the application as presented by Mr. Westmoreland, as seconded by Mr. Asbill and Mr. Melling, and I couldn't feel more strongly about, about it. I would appreciate the support of my fellow board members.
I, I understand your sentiments exactly, Mr. Beresley. I, I do have a, I do have a concern with the safety aspect of asking 28 homes to try to head north on Peachtree without any aid of traffic light whatsoever.
That's up to the DOT to decide whether to say. They get the UTE approval? It's not on us? It's a state highway.
Any other discussion?
Just a comment. I think this project has come a long way from where it was. It was, in my view, in my own type of project, in its previous form, and I think it's getting to the point where I feel like it's something I can support.
I certainly appreciate the concerns of all the vehicles making the left-hand turns out of Peachtree. I would just, you know, reiterate that if Georgia DOT approves it, then they approve it. There are several other streets that people are having to make left-hand turns on as well, so.
Sure. And I'm not, you know, please don't mistake me for, for fighting on this. I'm just, I'm just raising a point. You know, I, I don't know how many residents that live on Bel Air, when they want to go north on Peachtree, go out Bel Air.
Most likely.
Yeah, rush hour in the morning.
I agree. Yes, sir. When the light stops...
I go forward to get to my business.
It took me six minutes yesterday to make a left.
It can. When the light stops, people going south on Peachtree are generally willing to let us come through.
Okay. And like I said, I'm not trying to fight anybody, I'm just bringing up a point. So I'll be happy to entertain a motion.
Like, it's never, never perfect, but, but this is by far the best result. Okay, thank you. I'd like to move, I'd like to move to approve this variance application with the following conditions. Do I need to recite the variance application? It's a variance to allow curb cut on Peachtree Road.
Yeah.
And my ZBA case number 1426 to approve.
That's perfect.
Okay. I'd like to offer the following conditions. Number one, as stated in the staff report, development shall occur in accordance with the site plan. Site plan. Well, that's going to be modified too. Development of the lot shall occur in condition with the site plan submitted on March 20, 2014, as modified by the drawing submitted tonight by the applicant with the only access on Peachtree. Not that one.
Then is it?
If you remove the second sentence from condition one, the item on the screen would be compliant with your...
This has a... No, it doesn't.
No, it doesn't. Yeah, it does not. That's not a draft.
Okay.
Yeah, that's not a draft.
All right. Okay. Let me start over. Condition one would be, development of the lot shall occur in accordance with the site plan submitted on March 20, 2014, to community development, but not including that second sentence. Condition number two would be, the curb cut on Peachtree Road shall be full access contingent upon and based upon a driveway permit from DOT. No condition, condition three would be deleted, so my new third condition would be the same as condition four. Owner developer shall submit a combination plat for approval by the community development department. Prior to this, it's a building permit related to development. And my final condition would just be to clarify, no vehicular access on Bel Air Drive.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Since there's none, all those in favor of the motion as presented, please signify by raising your hand and saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passed, Mr. Beresley. All right. Last case of the evening, ZBA 14-27, Gaddy Survey and Design Incorporated, to reduce the average front yard setback from 144.45 feet to 85 feet to construct a new single-family home, 3188 Sabrooth Drive.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The case before you is ZBA 1427. It is a request to reduce...
Can y'all please pause?
Continue. It is a request to reduce the average front yard setback from 144.45 feet to 85 feet. Essentially, the request is 85... Essentially, the request, 85 feet, in itself, has been requested to incorporate the stairs that are in the front yard, the front portion of the, the proposed residence. And actually, the residence in itself, its closest point, will be set back 96.6 feet. With further review of the application as requested, staff has made a recommendation that the board vote in favor of the request, and has stipulated to one condition. And I guess that staff will stipulate to the report as a whole. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Gaddy, if you want to come forward and make your brief comments?
Actually, nobody in the room, so I don't think I have any opposition. Basically, this is one of the fiascos of setback averaging. If you, if we didn't have a house that was 190-foot from Saybrook, we wouldn't be here. The option is to build, the rear of the building is touching the rear building line, and because I have a 12-foot difference in grade back there, I'm going to have a series of four-foot retaining walls, a little 3:1 slope. I like that all the trees in the back. The way I've got it positioned, I think is the most aesthetically pleasing, and that's all this.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any comment, Curtis?
None in favor to an opposition.
Okay.
One of which has asked that it be read into the record.
Okay.
Michael Clifford, builder proposes to build closer to the extensive string, let me start over. Builder proposes to build closer to the extensive string mitigation measures enacted by the DAP county a few years ago. Post frontage is not compliant with the character of the neighborhood. The builder, who just finished a neighboring house, will cite twice for dumping subsistence against the strip bed. And the next speaker in opposition is Sandy Murray.
Murray?
Yes, sir.
All right. Would you like to use any of your time for a follow-on, those first two comments?
There's a small pipe in the front, very low area in the front yard. We're keeping, we're keeping that natural as far as what the builder did next door. We spent $17,000 putting in a de-watering system in the front yard to solve the water problems and keep, and I was there when the builder put in that de-watering system. We did an excellent job keeping any settlements from going down the stream. We excavated a pit, loaded the geofabric, filled it up with 57 stone, wrapped the geofabric, had the pipe in it. Then we punched out to tie to the spring box at the property line on this land. We didn't get burnt business up going down the stream. I think they were referring to a complaint about a person washing out a latex paintbrush and dumping it into the front yard, and the parents don't like to do that.
All right. Thank you very much. We're going to close the public comment, open it up to the board for discussion. Since there's none, I'll entertain a motion.
What should be passed, ZBA 14-27, with staff stipulation one, now, staff stipulation one.
We have a motion.
I'll second.
All right. We have a motion and a second for approval of ZBA 14-27 as, including the one condition in the staff report. Any discussion? All those in favor of the approval, please signify by raising your hand and saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
It's 11:59 and...
I'll be happy to entertain a motion for adjournment.
It's 11:59 and 59 seconds. I will be adjourned while it's still today.
All those in favor of adjournment, please signify by raising your hand and saying aye.
Aye.
And just to remember, we have 12 cases next month.